Good evening. This is the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop. The date is June 7, 2023. The time is 7:34. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments. And please, excuse me, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Robin Fisher, 412 North Monroe. I'm getting better at this, I promise. I apologize in advance, I'm going to jet out. I just wanted to say hello and reiterate our interest for a sidewalk on Glen. And I guess the question that comes to mind as I'm trying to help you decide is why now, right? What's the pressure? Why can't we wait three years? Why can't we do an inch at a time? And I think the easiest answer is it's getting to be a really chaotic world, right? So if you look at the drivers that drive on Glen, they're paying less attention. They have Facebook, they're texting, and you can see that in the police records of more and more accidents that are occurring on this busy road. You also have tractor-trailers going down that road because it is the largest road crossing Ridgewood, and it is the direct line to the highway. It is also the main road between towns, right? It's going to get Midland Park and then that side and cross over to Westwood and all those other sides. So it's a major street. It's not a cul-de-sac. It's not a street that can afford not to have sidewalks. And as the spring comes and the drivers are paying less attention and the speeds are increasing despite efforts to put warning signs, "Slow down, slow down," and you've got a lot of neighbors also saying, "Please, my kids are on this block, slow down." That hasn't helped. We've discussed this for over five years with the village, with the safety committee, with the police department, with the engineers. We just need to get it done. We've got a small stretch left, and then there is something that people can use. It may not be ideal, but it is something. I personally think, do it once, do it right, and you did it right on the other side. You've got just a little left, so let's do it. But the urgency is we just can't afford to lose anybody. And with the signs going up that there are autistic individuals who live on that block, that's a scary thought, right? You've got, I don't know if you pay attention, but there's a few new moms trying to get their strollers up that road recently. They just gave birth, so you've got three-month-olds coming up on a stroller. Just, it can't happen, guys. We can't lose anybody to this. And again, it is the way to a safe route to school because a lot of these kids are going to used Glen to get to and from the high school and from the different, some of the elementarys and BF to the west side. And all the west side is expected to go through there to get to the east side. So I just wanted to say thank you for listening to me, and please, we just need it. We can't, we just can't afford to wait so long. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin.
Hi, good evening. Ellie Gruber, 229 South Irving. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I understand you're a grandfather. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruber.
And I understand Lorraine has her 35th birthday. Congratulations.
Thanks, Ellie.
Anyway, it's great news. Okay. I feel the need to set the record straight about the costs of the Sheddler project. The numbers nine million, seven million, five million have shown up in statements about the property, and now the mayor in his letter to the village has come up with a new number, six million. The number is not shown on any of the financial reports on the village website. I'm not sure where six million comes from, but I do need to make two other points. Whatever the cost figure, whether it's three, six, five, seven, it represents the total cost of both the house and the field. It has often been cited at these meetings that it's the cost of just the house, and that's just incorrect. Second, even if your number is correct, and I doubt it, it fails to recognize the $4 million in grants which the town has thus far received. All of the cost figures that have been bandied about, cited as costs to the towns, are too high. Could be high as $4 million, too high. And then there's a separate problem. Mr. Pramavera was hired specifically to find a way to void the historic designation around the house so that a larger field can be built. If he is successful, and all indications are he will not, but if he is, the Ridgewood taxpayer will have to pay back the $1.7 million in grants, no matter what you've been told. They will have to pay it back. The only legitimate course of action is to go back to the 2018 plan where the youth of Ridgewood will have a mid-sized field, there will be walking paths, there will be trees, the house will be utilized. The field could have been open this fall if all the delaying tactics, not by you, just by you, by the engineering department, again and again sending in wrong reports. And now, thanks to you finishing this following up, we're going to have more years of delays, and no one's going to be playing on the field. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ellie.
Christina Million, 530 West Saddle River Road. Tonight you plan to award a contract for the construction of a PFOS treatment facility for approximately $9.4 million to CMS Construction of Plainfield, New Jersey. Having to hire an outside contractor very much feels like a significant and alarming moment. It highlights how bad this issue is in Ridgewood and shows that we don't have the experts or capacity to handle it ourselves. So I wanted to ask a few questions regarding PFOS and the state of Ridgewood water. I'd like to know if there are specific neighborhoods that have higher elevated levels of PFOS versus others. Feels like residents should know this. Two months ago, knowing the severity of Ridgewood water PFOS contamination issue, the majority of you voted to install a large artificial turf sports field at the historic Sheddler property, and I'm struggling to understand how this aligns with tonight's contract. On one hand, you're trying to clean up the cancer-causing water, and on the other hand, you're increasing PFOS to our town, you're ignoring science and all the medical professionals who took time to write to you specifically. We were CC'd, we saw these letters, and specifically, you're telling our neighbors who are here tonight with private well water that you frankly don't care about their health. Now, if I'm CMS Construction or any contractor hired by Ridgewood to remove or work on PFOS facilities in Ridgewood, this is a great town to do business in because we don't seem to be prioritizing the health of our community, and we're adding to the problem and keeping these contractors very busy. So please help me understand the council's strategy for handling PFOS in Ridgewood. And I also wanted to ask if you please prioritize the public welfare and hold a special public meeting on the issues of PFOS in our water so that any resident can get up and ask both the Ridgewood Water Company, CMS Construction, or any contractor that you have hired questions about this contamination. I also think it would be specifically helpful for newer residents. We shouldn't be assuming that everyone is caught up with what's been happening, and certainly we've read about the news in CBS who covered this story in fall of 2022. So many of us have questions. So in the spirit of transparency, please consider holding an open dialogue with those tasked with removing cancer-causing chemicals from Ridgewood's drinking and bathing water. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
On a lighter note, I was driving here and was so pleased to see these new trash receptacles. Siobhan, they're lovely. They look like blooming flowers. That was wonderful, right? A little win. The details. As Lorraine's pots, Lorraine, thank you for Project Pride and for the volunteers who put those beautiful flowers in. Thank you all so much. And I want to thank the council for listening to the presentation tonight by Nancy Brennan Hill and hopefully Adam Brown about this really wonderful project that they have developed through the Shade Tree Commission called Adopt a Sabling so we can continue to get more trees into our ground and hopefully do something to alleviate what we're all experiencing right now, just trying to breathe, right? But thank you again for all those little things that make such a difference.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd A. Loving, 342 South Irving Street. When I was here at the March, I'm sorry, May 24 meeting, I pointed out my concern about noticing that there were notices for a closed sessions on the bulletin board downstairs, but there were no corresponding notices on the website. I visited the village hall this week on Monday because I had some business with the building department, and I noticed that the same thing happened again. I'm happy to report that I spoke to the manager's office on Tuesday, and the problem seems to have been corrected, and now there are notices about your closed sessions online as well as there being notices posted on the bulletin board. So I'd like to thank Heather for getting right to that and making sure that that was straightened out. I hope that in the future that is, becomes a regular thing as opposed to me having to call the manager's office every time I see it. Also, on March 24, there was an incident that took place in this room that I think I need to speak about a little bit. It's been pointed out several times that the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act does not give the right of the council to censor any remarks that are made up here on the podium. I also note that since March 24, or maybe just prior to, I'm sorry, May 24, just prior to May 24, there is now something posted on the village website called the Guide to Village Council Meetings. In that document that's posted, there is something that says that people or speakers can only be interrupted, only be interrupted if there is one reason, and that is a point of order being made. On May 24, somebody was interrupted for something else. I hope we have put an end to this now that on the website, there is a rule that says you can't be interrupted for anything other than if somebody wants to call a point of order, or if somebody is being disruptive, or, what's the other term you got in there? Disruptive or disorderly. Disruptive or disorderly. The person who was interrupted on May 24 was neither being disruptive nor disorderly, so I take issue with the fact that that person was interrupted, was admonished for something that they said, and that should not have happened, and I hope that doesn't happen again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boyd.
Hi, Niti Mystery, 416 Colwell Court. Two quick things. You know, I come here to talk about the sidewalks, but I have to acknowledge the Sheddler neighborhood, especially when our environment is like this today. It kind of really makes you think, I'm wearing a mask again, what it feels like when your environment is like being attacked and how vulnerable you feel. It's such an awful feeling, and that's something we can all relate to right now, today, probably tomorrow, but this is an ongoing feeling the Sheddler neighborhood has. So I would just ask you to please, as someone who doesn't live anywhere near Sheddler, just please listen to them and continue to have a dialogue with them and be considerate of them. Now, as far as West Glen, I'm here to give my ongoing support to the completion of the road. I don't know where we are right now with the installation. I did see some red paint marks that were drawn on Glen Avenue, starting from the tree that just, where the sidewalk abruptly ends at the tree, there's red spray paint, and it sort of continues down Glen towards where the crosswalk for Alpine Terrace should be. I don't know if that's part of the plan, so I would just like an update if you guys have any information about that. And also, where the spray paint ends, it sort of implies that that's where the sidewalk would end and not go towards the end of South Hill, where we've all discussed is the most dangerous portion. So I would once again just ask that that portion, that's the most treacherous, the portion with no sidewalks on either side, be addressed as soon as possible. And I don't know what type of delays we're experiencing with the engineering department, but I feel the flat part, there's probably already a plan in place for it. So if there's something already ready to go, like, could we just please move ahead with that, just so we can get something done? Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Ann Loving, 342 South Irving Street. First of all, happy birthday, Lorraine.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm glad you're here instead of celebrating with your family because we need you here, but I hope you did get to celebrate with your family. And congratulations, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of fact, my husband is out on a FaceTime with our grandson, so I certainly do know how special it is to be a grandparent.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome. I hope I have permission to continue. It has now been five months since Mr. Vagianos became mayor, and one adjective that seems to fit this timeframe is bizarre. Bizarre is defined as very strange or unusual. The council is busy promoting green initiatives. No mall May, we've got this wonderful Shade Tree Commission tonight, and yet bizarrely, you're proceeding full steam ahead to clearcut the beautiful trees at Sheddler. The council proudly announces how PFOS are being eliminated from our drinking water, and yet bizarrely, you're planning to place a PFOS-laden fake turf mat on the Sheddler land, which will not only add this carcinogen to the groundwater in general, but directly into the wells of those neighbors immediately around the property. The village has had the great honor of having both the Sheddler House and the Sheddler Park designated as historic by the state of New Jersey, and yet bizarrely, a man of highly questionable qualifications has been hired for the express purpose of getting that wonderful designation overturned. The mayor, who owns properties and a business in the downtown, recently made a big show of recusing from the vote on significant sewage discharge. Yet bizarrely, he votes on everything in the CBD that will directly benefit his income, like the pedestrian mall, parking policies, dining corrals, the loading zones, and so on. The council developed and posted a new policy for public comments in which it stated that a speaker cannot be interrupted for any reason other than a call to order, and yet bizarrely, speakers are interrupted by the mayor in particular on a regular basis. Not just me, others. Openness and transparency are buzzwords that we hear so often from the dais, and yet bizarrely, we got an e-notice that had three untruths in it. We get agendas for closed sessions that are not posted as required, the village manager is instructed to step down without the entire council being involved in the discussion, comments have been hidden from the mayor's social media page, and more. It has been a really bizarre five months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? We will go to our hybrid access. There are two people who would like to make comments. First one is Mr. Hallaby. Welcome, Mr. Hallaby. You're on mute.
Okay. I have unmuted. Rurik Hallaby, 1 Franklin Avenue in Ridgewood. On the CBD, congratulations and best wishes on the pedestrian mall and dining corrals. They are a shot in the arm in revitalizing the CBD. Thank you for all the hard work that was done to bring these around. Having said that, the future vitality of the CBD will require some very hard and creative work. For instance, you need to reinstate the financial advisory committee to work with the village CFO to see what can be done about the debt that was incurred to build the Hudson Street garage. One $1.25 per hour for parking in Ridgewood when our neighboring towns charge nothing is unsustainable, period. Hybrid VC meetings. Thank you for reinstating hybrid village council meetings. Today's horrible air conditions is the best example for having hybrid meetings. Yes, hybrid meetings are the new normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rurik. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Village of Ridgewood, a guide for public meetings, and I have a copy with me. I tell you, it's a beautifully written document that explains to the residents the working of the village council, a key step in encouraging participation by the public. A link to the document should be included in the agenda for every VC meeting. Now, one editorial comment I should make is that it was written, I'm sure, by not a lawyer, but a really caring village council member. I think the lawyers have had too many whereas's and whereof's and stuff like that. This is clearly written by a caring person for people to understand, and it should be included in the agenda for every meeting. A link should be included. Now, on truthfulness in the dais, certain public comments were made in the past about the truthfulness of certain members of the present village council. Made me scratch my head and wonder, where were these commentators in the past six years when certain members of the then-village council set the gold bar for what I would call alternative facts? Now, the disaster that is Sheddler. Again, I urge you to retain an independent law firm to do a white paper on the disaster that is Sheddler. You owe it to the residents of Ridgewood, and especially to those who live northeast of Route 17, to explain the many challenges we face with Sheddler, and none of these are of the present village councils making. And incidentally, as far as the financials, without patting myself on the back, for two years, I worked like crazy to get the village to release a reconciliation of the costs of the Sheddler project, and I finally succeeded. And there is no question, no one is throwing numbers around, it is a $7.3 million project, of which 2.3 million get allocated to the house. It's very, very clear, and if someone cannot get a copy of the spreadsheet, I'll be happy to provide it.
Thank you, Rurik.
Sorry, one last thing. As far as West Glen, I agree with Robin Fisher totally. Just get it done as quickly as possible. You cannot have a major far affair with no sidewalks. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Rurik. Next up, Susan. And you're still on mute. There we go.
Hi. Hello. All right. Susan Rouen, 705 Kingsbridge Lane. Happy birthday, Lorraine, and congrats, Mayor. I'm not certain why I'm congratulating you, so hopefully I'm not doing the wrong thing. Anyway, I wanted to piggyback on the comments with Ridgewood addressing the PFOS in the water. You know, yet the village council approved to build a turf field on the Sheddler property and add PFOS into people's well water, which, again, is very bizarre. And then there is a presentation tonight about shady tree, yet the village council approved to cut down hundreds of trees at Sheddler. Again, very bizarre. I also wanted to say that I've attended and watched various meetings, and there has been numerous conversations about the central business district. There has been a pedestrian plaza mall, new trash cans, new website, even talks of a new garage, even though the present garage has trouble with occupancy. You know, planting flowers downtown, which I volunteered and helped for. Yet there's very little conversation about the footbridge, which is a safety concern in Ridgewood. It has been closed for two years. Residents are forced to take more dangerous routes to access the town as well as the park and ride. A few weeks ago, the village council started conversations again about the footbridge after I made a Facebook post. Yet again, the footbridge stopped, has stopped in the conversations. There was supposed to be continual dialogue on it, then it dropped off. So I hope the village council will give the footbridge the same attention it gives the central business district, you know, because it is a safety concern to this side of Ridgewood. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Brett, you're up next. And you're on mute.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We can.
All right, thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I live at, I'm Brett Lyons. I live at 224 West Glen Avenue. I want to thank Robin Fisher for being there in person. I unfortunately was not able to be, but I do want to speak on behalf of my family and the other families on West Glen. I've lived here for six years. I've watched how aggressively and dangerously people drive up and down our street. I have a son with special needs who attends Ridgewood High School and a daughter who attends GW, and my kids have never had a safe route to school. So I implore you to move forward with this project, complete it. I live one house away from where you stopped. I know from where I live and down, it's a little bit more tricky due to the terrain, but I think we need to just allocate the budget to do it right. I'm not sure how it could be done without retaining walls. Hopefully, the engineer has that figured out if you're looking to cut a few corners, but I just don't think that's possible. But hey, maybe, maybe he's a smarter man than the rest of us, but it looks to me like it's too steep a terrain to do without proper retaining walls. So I ask you to please complete the project and complete it correctly so that everything looks correct and that everybody is safe and able to navigate West Glen. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brett. We have some additional time. Does anyone else from the audience who has not spoken yet want to make a comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will go to our manager's report.
Well, can I just say something?
By all means.
I like the suggestion about having a public forum about PFOS. I will speak to Rich Calby about whether that can be done. I know with four towns to cover, I think, and he has been doing that in other towns, and it's probably time to do that in Ridgewood. With regard to the mayor voting on matters that concern the central business district, I think our attorney has explained previously that if he is in a class among others who own property downtown, he can vote on certain matters so that when he does vote, I am sure that is with the advice of council.
Thank you, Pam.
And I wanted to say, you can go.
I just want to ask Heather during your manager's report if you could maybe give people an update on West Glen, what's happening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jevon?
Yeah, so I had a couple things to say. With respect to West Glen, because I know the public's listening, we, as a council, still don't have the full scope. We don't have an update from engineering as to the actual plan without retaining walls and the cost. So I believe that's coming back on the schedule. I've been following up with Heather about the no left-hand stop turn, so the process is slow. It has to come back to us with engineering, with the design, and with the cost, and then we have to make a decision. We haven't had that yet. It's not on the agenda tonight, so we don't have that information to make a decision. With respect to Sheddler, I wanted to make sure, because we have taken a lot of time, I think what ends up happening is spend gets confused with allocation. So the project is a $7 million allocation, and then we talk about spending and grants, and not all of it's been spent yet, and not all of the grants have come back. And not all of it's been spent yet, and not all of the grants have come back in LA. So, we have updated, like, we've gone through all 12 bonding ordinance with the CFO, with Heather, with the Parks Department. All that information is online, but there's a difference between allocation and execution, and I have all that detail, including all the 12 bond ordinances, and we have listed monthly updates on the website under the Sheddler tab. And if you have questions, just let us know. The second thing with respect to Sheddler, there keeps this express statement of our purpose for hiring Peter Primavera. For me, hiring Peter Primavera will help this council navigate a process. To date, we don't have approval from SHPO. So, for me, I just want to say that Peter was hired to help this council and our community navigate a process. I did want to say thank you to Carolyn Jacoby for the shout-out for the garbage cans, and I want to thank Heather and everybody in this village who made it happen. It is the little things I think that were more likely to eliminate some vacancies with improving the charm of our street, whether it's garbage cans, flowers, or shade trees. And I also wanted to let people know, I love that people are reading the guide to the public meetings. It is online. It's meant to be a touchstone. The League would love it. I'll send it to Ann, and I'm really grateful, even though it wasn't just written by a person. Our lawyer did weigh in, and he was helpful in getting it done, and the deputy mayor, Pam, helps big time. So, I think it's a very useful tool. I hope you all click it, read it, and share it, and that's it.
Mayor, if I may.
By all means.
And just in following the comments that were made by the deputy mayor with regard to the mayor's participation in discussions and voting of matters involving the Central Business District, looked at it extensively. Looked at the statute, looked at case law, looked at treatises, discussed this with attorneys for the League of Municipalities, other attorneys that give lectures on this issue. Very clearly, the participation is permitted to the extent that he's been involved in it so far. I've given him that advice, and doesn't violate any ethical or other obligation that he has with regard to that as the mayor, as an elected official in the town. So, I hope, if anybody has any questions about it, you can always feel free to call me and discuss it.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Siobhan. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to Heather.
Okay. Due to the very unhealthy air quality, all village sports were canceled today, and they'll also be canceled tomorrow. And Graden Pool was closed today, about half a day, and also will be closed tomorrow. Tomorrow's garbage pickup will be curbside only for the safety of our village employees so that they can get done sooner and be able to get out of the terrible air out there. We will make a decision about sports, Graden, and garbage pickup for Friday tomorrow afternoon. It is supposed to break. There should be some rain, but we have to wait and see. Pride Day will be celebrated on Saturday, June 10th, 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Memorial Park at Van Ness Square. There will be music, local speakers of all ages, and raising of the pride flag. The Bergen County Utilities Authority has a recycling event scheduled for Sunday, June 11th, from 9:00 to 3:00, rain or shine, at Bergen Community College, which is right on Paramus Road. It's free for Bergen residents. ID is required. No commercial vehicles are allowed. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring free movies in the park Wednesday nights at 9:00 p.m. in Memorial Park at Van Ness Square. June 14th is The Sting. June 28th is Mulan. July 5th is Footloose. July 16th, Pirates of the Caribbean. August 2nd, Man of Steel, and August 16th, Sunset Boulevard. The Pedestrian Plaza, its grand opening last Saturday. This is where streets are closed to vehicular traffic from Walnut Street to Broad Street along East Ridgewood Avenue. It's being held Saturdays and Sundays until October 9th. There will be music and entertainment in Memorial Park at Van Ness Square on Saturday night, and also music on Sundays. Each month will be culturally themed, and there will be special activities for children. The 65th Annual Free Summer Concert Series has started at the Cashew Memorial Shell on Veterans Field. The concerts start at 8:30 p.m., unless otherwise noted, and are scheduled every Tuesday and Thursday in the months of June and July up to August 10th. They start mostly at 8:30 p.m., but again, summer at 8:00 or 7:30. The performance on Thursday, June 8th, the Orpheus Club Men's Chorus, and on Tuesday, June 13th, the RHS New Players Cabaret Night. The Ridgewood Guild sponsors Art in the Park. That's the first Friday in July and August, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. As a reminder, all dogs seven months or older must be licensed. Dog license renewals have been sent out via email. The deadline for dog licensing is June 30th to avoid the late fee. The Ridgewood Guild sponsors music in the night for providing music in various locations. On Friday nights in the Central Business District, it's through Labor Day. Council Chat is held on the first Saturday of the month. The next one is scheduled for Saturday, July 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Please call for reservations, 201-670-5500, extension 2207. Walk-ins are welcome, however, reservations have priority. The Ridgewood Fourth of July Celebration will take place on July 4th, which is a Tuesday. The flag raising at the train station is at 9:00 a.m. The parade begins at 10:00 a.m. Fireworks and entertainment on Veterans Field, beginning with music at 6:30 p.m. and fireworks at approximately 9:15 p.m. Come and enjoy this annual tradition. Graden Pool is now open. Hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Village council upcoming meetings are broadcast live from this village hall courtroom on the village website, Channel 34 on Fios. They're also available on Zoom or by phone or YouTube. Our upcoming meetings are June 14th is our village council public meeting, July 19th is our village council public meeting, and August 9th is our village council public meeting. Village council work sessions are June 28th and July 12th and August 2nd. All of our meetings begin at 7:30 p.m. Just do note the July 12th and 19th dates. We are not meeting July 5th because if there were, if there's rain on July 4th, the rain date for the fireworks is July 5th. So, if that were to occur, we couldn't hold a meeting here because this entire area is full of fireworks and people. So, we did move it forward one week. Excuse me. The West Glen Avenue update is that our engineering department is working on it. I do hope that they can either present either June 28th or July 12th. So, we'll see what they can do, and then we'll have additional information, and then the council does have to make a final decision, how they want to proceed, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Heather. And then we'll go to council reports. Evan?
Sure, I'll be brief. So, first want to thank everyone who participated in the Memorial Day event. It was, without a doubt, the most, I think, moving thing I've done as a member of this council. The American Legion, everybody else who was there to put on the event just did a spectacular job honoring our fallen soldiers, and it was an absolute privilege and an honor to be able to represent Ridgewood by attending as a council member. On a much, less auspicious note, also the following weekend, or this last weekend, also got to be there for the opening of Pedestrian Plaza. It was phenomenal to see so many people out there on the plaza, so many neighbors, so many people from outside of Ridgewood coming in to frequent our businesses. Really wonderful. I'm looking forward to being a part of that through October. Would encourage all of you to go, spend as much time as you can on Pedestrian Plaza. It's just a really, really fantastic thing that Ridgewood does and makes one of the many reasons that makes Ridgewood so special. I do also want to join the chorus of congratulating Mayor Grandpa Paul over there. Also want to join the chorus in wishing a happy birthday to my friend and fellow council person, Lorraine Reynolds. As Lorraine and I were discussing, there's also another birthday. It's my daughter's 14th birthday today, so Lorraine, you're in great company, or I guess my daughter's in great company because you had the date first, but want to wish her a happy birthday as well from the desk.
Not necessarily. Just saying. Thank you, Evan. Siobhan?
Sure. So, before I begin my council report, I wanted to address something that happened two weeks ago, and I felt that myself and the council weren't as supportive of our staff. I understand people have questions of our staff, but some of their credentials were questioned, and I don't feel that I supported our staff as much as I could. I want to remind everybody, we are very, very lucky to have such a talented staff with incredible credentials, and I really went home feeling pretty bad about it on Wednesday. I talked to Heather. And whether we agree with our staff professionals all the time, I do feel bad. They're not able to come up here and defend themselves, and I want to apologize for not being braver two weeks ago, and I want to encourage the council when it comes to staff to be slightly more protective. With that, I too attended the Memorial Day Celebration, and it was lovely, really powerful, very moving. I want to thank the American Legion Post 53, and I want to give a big shout-out to Joan Montage, who did the banners. We have many uses of our park, but this ceremony was incredibly powerful. I was very grateful to be there. My brother is ex-military, and I spent about a half hour telling him, who is a Ridgewood boy, how happy he would have been with how Ridgewood did this. I also want to take the time to thank Ridgewood High School, who provided the musical talent, and Sally. It was wonderful. They added a level of intensity and beauty to the whole event. On Saturday, it was quite a busy day. I had council chat, and it was council chat with the juniors, me and Evan, all by ourselves, and we met with multiple members of the community, and I want to encourage people that this is an option. On the first of every month, we, two of us, meet with the public and we address it. So, if this isn't a comfortable place for you, we are available there, and you can sign up through the clerk's office. I also had the pleasure of attending the Pedestrian Plaza, and we opened Graden Pool, which I unfortunately couldn't go to because I was here. And I just want to remind people that now Ridgewood is open to swim, shop, dine, and stroll, and I hope everybody does that and invites a friend. On Saturday night, I attended the clam bake at Ridgewood Country Club for the Ridgewood Public Library and the Foundation. It was an awesome event. You know, after COVID, it's so great to see people getting together on large-scale events, and, you know, when you see our community rallying around the library, softening our tax dollars through fundraising, it was beautiful, and I want to thank the Foundation for including us and allowing me to be there. This Tuesday, the Fields Committee met early. We will probably take a pause over the summer, picking back up in August, but we had a myriad of issues come up. We, again, discussed adult soccer and how some of our adults feel invisible when it comes to playing time. There's a discussion, and a subcommittee's been formed to modify the fields policy. There was an interesting capital discussion about a potential purchase that we could share, the turf tank, which is also known as the Field Roomba. It's a tank that goes around and paints our stripes and lines the fields. Apparently, this is a pretty big skill set, and Ridgewood leases it right now, and we are talking with the Board of Ed about potentially buying one and partnering with another municipality. And the Fields Committee is going to also take summer field trips to check on the status of haws and orchards, so if anybody had feedback for us, let us know. I did want to wish Lorraine a happy birthday, and congratulations. I hope you do something more fun than this over the weekend. I wanted to congratulate Paul on being a grandpa, and I want to end this with a final reminder that Saturday is Pride in Ridgewood. Again, another use of our park. It's at Van Ness Square from 1:00 to 2:00. It's going to be great. We have a secret reveal that's not so secret, and I hope everybody joins us there. Thanks.
Thanks, Siobhan. Lorraine?
Thank you. Not too much to add, just want to remind everybody that the Cashew Shell Summer Series has started every Tuesday and Thursday night. It's a different band. It's well worth going. Fantastic. Look at the website, see the schedule, see who you want to see. I also want to congratulate Paul for being a grandpa again.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Evan, happy birthday to your daughter. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine. Pam?
Well, I'm so glad your daughter had a baby so that I could go to the Boy Scout-Eagle Scout induction on Monday night because Peter Simone and Calvin Harper were the two boys who were inducted, and the background that the Boy Scouts gave them in a myriad of badges and activities was so interesting. It's not just tying knots, which I always wanted to learn, but it was also fingerprinting, leatherworking, nuclear science. They just learned so much, and they were so poised, and their parents could not have been prouder. It was really an interesting ceremony, also to see what an example they set for the younger scouts. I also wanted to thank the Ridgewood AM Rotary Club, of which Paul and I are both members, for getting out on Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. and painting the fire boxes on East Ridgewood Avenue and in the neighboring streets. They covered about 30 boxes, and the boxes really needed painting. Now, they look all spiffy and new, and they are unique to Ridgewood, and if there's ever a fire near your house, that is the fastest way to get a fire truck to the fire. Your phone may be in your pocket, but that signal goes to a cell tower first, goes to dispatch, and then goes to the fire department. So, the fire boxes, they're made by GameWell, they are the fastest method to contact the fire department, and we had such a good time. We're going to do it again in the fall. I also wanted to let people know that in the multi-district PFOS litigation, the bellwether case that was slated to start on June 5th in Stewart, Florida, settled for billions of dollars, and I hope that bodes well for our lawsuit, that we should get reimbursed for all of the enormous expense we've gone to to treat our drinking water. The Deer Forum, Deer and Tick Forum, was hosted at the library with help from our Health Department. Don Citrulo, our Director of Health, was one of the panelists, along with the Bergen County Entomologist, and one of the employees from Tyco, which is the contractor that we use and many towns use for disposing of animal carcasses. And they gave us so much information, it was really interesting to hear, and also interesting to hear what our residents had to say and their experiences of deer in the backyards and that sort of thing. And we may be collecting more data as a result of, auspiciously, No Mo May, which just finished, and 42 of the participants in No Mo May volunteered to have their properties surveilled by the county and rutgers to see if there were ticks in their backyard, and they found none, which I thought was really interesting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, you guys took all the good stuff, but I'm going to emphasize it anyway because this is such a great town to live in. It's not perfect, but, boy, it really comes close from the Memorial Day event, which was truly moving, and Evan, as you said, what an honor to be able to be part of that. But all of the great things that are going on here in town, like we said, Saturday, Graden Pool opened this coming Saturday, is Pride Day to celebrate, Cashew Shell, all of the great things going on over there, the dining corrals. I got to take a moment to tell you, I was out with the crews putting this, putting the three-and-a-half-thousand-pound blocks in front of the restaurants. I left at 1:00 a.m., and they were going for hours and hours after that. And if you think that putting those things as precisely as they do, if you don't, if you haven't actually seen it, you wouldn't believe it. It's a giant front-end loader. It's a couple of guys trying to push it a certain way. It would go down if it wasn't in line. They picked it up and did it again. So, a big shout-out to those guys because they were really, they were incredible. But the Pedestrian Plaza, what a great event. What a great event. We're all excited about it, so we're looking forward to doing that again and again. So, please come on out. But, you know, I always talk about getting off the bench and getting in the game. Joan Montan, you know, she saw something, and she said, "I want to put those banners up. I want to honor our vets. I want to honor our service people." She had an idea for a project. She brought it in. She just got it all done. For Pedestrian Plaza, Jeannie Johnson and Company are working a million hours a week. If you're not volunteering, helping in some way, come on, we need help. There's a lot to be done and a lot of stuff that we can do to make it better. So, we're all excited about that, and with that, I'm excited that it's your birthday. It's a good day. I'm excited it's your daughter's birthday, but I'm really excited about a little girl named Tatum June DeLisandro, who is my second granddaughter, who is coming up on being three days old in about two hours, and I'm going to be completely objective about this. This child is so magnificent. She is so wonderful, and she is so delightful, and I'm going to take, yes, I'm going to take this bully pulpit, and I'm going to take a moment to just crow about it because, as my daughter said, the birth of a child like this re-centers your birth of a child like this re-centers your universe. And so I am grateful, and I share this with you, because many of you have had this or something like this. So it was a good day. And with that, we will move on to our discussion. Heather?
Yes. The first is Ridgewood Water. It's awarding the contract for the PFOS treatment facility located on Prospect Street in Glen Rock. It will be treated with granular activated carbon filtration units. On June 2nd, seven bids were received, and Matt McDonald, the engineer of record for the project, has recommended the contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, which is CMS Construction, Inc. of Plainfield, New Jersey. Its amount not to exceed nine million four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Funding for this project has been accounted for in the Ridgewood Water capital budget, and it's being funded through the New Jersey I-Bank. In order to qualify for principal forgiveness, award of this contract must be made tonight. This will allow the New Jersey I-Bank time to verify the award and secure the funding before the state fiscal year ends on June 30th. The award will also be subject to authorization to award from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
And the planning board in Glen Rock has approved this?
That is correct. Yes.
Comments or other questions? Thank you, by the way, for being here.
Okay. The next item is a refund of a property tax overpayment. It occurred because there was a
Great job.
As both the sellers and buyers mortgage companies paid the second quarter property taxes. Town Title Agency of Paramus, New Jersey is due a refund, so this is to get them their refund.
I just, I actually did just have one question. Are we making, because the properties in Glen Rock, any headway on imposing restrictions and collaborating with the other municipalities in the four water drops? So, you know, Ridgewood Water, just because people here have four little water drops, and that indicates a town that we serve, and we had had a discussion in January about seeing if during the summer months, we could put restrictions in place, even though we have no authority. I know, we have no authority, but broker a deal with those councils. Are we, are we working on that?
We are working on it. Yes.
Rich Calmba can better answer that, but I know communication has gone out to all Fort, well, three, yeah, three other towns to not only make them aware of it, particularly with the most recent upgrade with regard to restrictions, but also the enforcement aspect, which is what you're really talking about.
Jill, do you know anything about that? Can you add anything?
So the general idea would be to get them to enforce it themselves and then reduce the overall demand?
So you're just asking, is this working?
We got to turn it on now. The little button. Yep, there you go.
I think it's on. Is it on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. So Glen Rock has agreed to prepare the same ordinance that Ridgewood has, and they're also enforcing. And the other towns were waiting.
That's awesome. And do you know when the ordinance in Glen Rock's going to be introduced?
I don't know, but I think it was very soon.
Okay.
I think they're very much on board, and I think it sounds like Midland Park is on board. I don't think they want to enforce as much as we do, but we're making progress.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great. Congratulations.
We also meet pretty frequently with Ridgewood Water on various issues, and, you know, I think that's a responsibility we might spread further out among council members, because you should meet these people in the other towns and know about these issues as well. So we'll alert you when you can fill in.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
So I now need a motion to suspend the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes.
We go on to the special public meeting.
This is the Village Council Special Public Meeting. Date is June 7th, 2023. The time is eight twenty-eight PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin, here. Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Whites?
Here.
Councilmember Winograd?
Here.
And Mayor Vagianos?
Here. I move the first reading of ordinance thirty-nine fifty-nine.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes. So ordered. Will the clerk please read ordinance thirty-nine fifty-nine by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic in Section 265-29 Parking Meter Zone Designated.
I move that ordinance thirty-nine fifty-nine be adopted on first reading and that June 28th, 2023 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
I second.
Perrin?
I just wanted to say before I vote, so that the public knows what we're talking about, we are talking about putting fifteen-minute meters in the Chestnut Street Lot, two near the alleyway that's near the dry cleaners that goes from the Chestnut Lot to Oak Street, and another two by the alley, by the pedestrian alleyway that runs alongside Park West Tavern, so that people can get to their stores quickly and accomplish their errands. And I vote yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes, especially on Lorraine's birthday, because she loves quarters.
Yes.
Okay. The following resolutions, number twenty-three dash one eighty-five through twenty-three dash one eighty-six, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Award contract construction of Prospect PFOS Treatment Facility. Designate village engineer to execute treatment works approval of Ridgewood Water. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
The following resolutions, number twenty-three dash one eighty-seven through twenty-three dash one eighty-eight, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Refund property tax overpayment, three oh two manor road. Designate village engineer to sign treatment works approval for Graydon Pool. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
We now need a motion to adjourn the special public meeting and reconvene the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And we'll now go to the presentation of the Shade Tree Commission to adopt a sapling.
Is there going to be something on the screen? Okay, good. Thanks. Ready, Dylan? Dylan, is it coming up? Oh, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. So into making the village even better. As you said, it's almost perfect. Nancy Brennan Hill of the Shade Tree Commission.
So Adam's going to be a little shy, but these are two members of the Shade Tree Commission, and I just want you to take your minute and tell them who you are.
Okay, no problem.
Because I know you and adore you, but they're going to fall in love with you now.
Nancy Brennan Hill, member of the Shade Tree Commission and ardent supporter of trees for Ridgewood.
As well as
Every place.
Nancy is actually born and raised and spent her whole life here. I'm Adam Brown, Shade Tree Committee member, as well as this is our little baby that we put together for adopt a sapling on our, on our sub-chair. So I am going to start the presentation, and like I said, Paul, great, we can always make the village better. Trees coming down and budgets of what we're talking about getting slashed, and this was a great alternative, and Nancy will not take the credit for it, but I'm going to give it to her as a huge supporter of trees. What we basically came up with is the idea of how do we get more trees in Ridgewood? So instead of planting trees and a lot of money and cost was adopt a sapling. Have people that would be on board in certain sections of the town of this being their baby, the new grandfather, and how it's going to change your life, and hopefully in the future when they're twenty-one. So start off, we know funding, money.
Oh, sorry. Here we go.
Nope.
No. Funding. Okay.
So the new, the saplings to purchase are approximately thirty-five dollars each in comparison to the amount of money that we'd have to spend on the large trees. So our funding for this project, if we did have a hundred homeowners, take this on, would be approximately fifty-four hundred dollars. We'd get four-foot saplings, mulch, the insurance would be covered through the village, the labor would all be volunteers, the donuts for watering is included as well, and again, total for the whole project, fifty-four hundred dollars.
Whoops. What are donuts?
The donuts are for the watering that you fill up, like you see on the gator bags on the town trees, the new street trees that they put in. So instead of gator bags, it's like a donut that would go on the base of it, since there's smaller trees, whips or saplings, that it wouldn't attach to the tree itself, and it would drip water into it and not have a structural with the wind and or knocking into it. And then the homeowners, again, we'll get into it, the homeowners will be responsible for filling those.
Does it hold about fifteen gallons? What's the typical?
It depends on which one that you get. They hold twelve to fifteen gallons of water each. So if, again, we're doing it in the fall, two to three times a week for the first couple of weeks, and then, you know, again, through the hot summer months the following year.
That's good.
And again, that would all be supplied to the homeowners.
Excuse me, Adam. Do you know what the diameter of these trees, four foot tall, or they like?
The four to five-foot tall trees would be approximately half an inch wide.
Okay.
And we did have the Arborst weigh in on this, because the gator bags were too high. So Declan was involved in the donut selection.
Yes. So for the volunteers, we came up with, you know, for Facebook, Instagram, schools, Boys and Girl Scouts, religious organizations, emails and phone calls with people that we know. And again, we are looking for twenty to a hundred adoptees for this. The volunteers also, when, if this does go forward, the volunteers would assemble all on village property to receive an address for the tree planting, where they'd be educated as well on it. As far as the volunteer registration, how to do it, via community pass or paper registration, which would be in the stable.
Wait a minute, we're getting a little out of sync here. Okay.
Here, Aiden.
There we go.
We have to go to
Which one, show me which one you want to do, and I'll find it.
That's fine. We'll go to volunteer registration information. So again, the volunteer registration would be more for tracking, for the people, for the name, their address, where they live, and as well as sign an agreement that they're going to water the tree during the first growing season, notify the parks, recreation, should the tree become damaged or perished through snow, so that there's accountability for everybody, including the town and including the homeowner, because this isn't something that we're just looking for anybody to do. So if you're not, they don't want to be on board with it, or just they want a tree, but they don't want to do anything, it's not for those people. We did that. Next one?
Yeah, which one do you want to do?
Six. My last one.
I think they're a little out of order.
That's right. Are you on six? Yeah, that's fine. I'm out of order. So for the volunteer safety, which we always know that's big on any of the streets in Ridgewood, with these saplings as well, or whips, we'd be able to work from the sidewalk. The maximum weight that we felt with the trees and/or the mulch that they'd have to lift, and endure, or any kind of tools, would be fifteen pounds. So again, minimal lifting and/or capacity of what somebody would have to do. Glove shovels would be provided if needed, and the proper way to work and to dig a hole for the people installing it, or as I call it, life skills. So purchase the trees, mulch, water, donuts, and steaks. So we, again, not to repeat too much, but we have to determine the amount of people that would be able to be in this first phase. We know that it's thirty-five dollars per tree. Identify the appropriate varieties, which we spoke with Declan, which would be from the, where's Declan? Shade Tree. From the Shade Tree as well, to make sure that the right varieties would be chosen for planting. And then the size of the tree, again, four to five feet, person can easily lift it without equipment, and then we would take care of purchasing the mulch, the trees, the donuts, and the steaks as far as from the Shade Tree. One other thing? So again, we talk about the guide stakes on holding up a tree in town, the newer trees that they put in. This isn't going to only just help hold it up, but it's really going to mark the location, because the tree's going to be small. So these stakes are going to be larger that are in the ground, approximately six feet tall. So that will actually give us, the plow guys and the municipal people, be able to give them guidance of where these trees are. Again, they could go a little bit away from with the snow as they're told to from their bosses on these newer saplings and not get quite as close. So that actually is quite important. Storage of the trees. So storage of the trees would be Village of Ridgewood Parks and Rec Department. Would, hopefully, we'd get them stored behind the firehouse. It's a shadier location. We can set up the delivery there. It's also secure, and we'd have, again, a couple of days prior to doing it. Myself and Nancy will take care of the inventory, tagging the trees prior to the trees being distributed to any of the residents for this project. And again, if we have to deliver the trees, we can deliver the trees. One before.
There we go.
Another thing is, probably one of the most important things, is the call for the eight-one-one markouts. So we would use the list of locations provided by Parks and Rec, again, on the registration and how that goes to the properties. We've already done it by calling eight-one-one. We know that it takes about approximately five minutes per location, and we know it's valid for eight to ten days, even though we called it rain or shine for this project. We know that at least if we did have to, because there's torrential or some sort of major issue, that we know that if we did have it set for a set day, a Saturday or Sunday, that we'd still be able to use the markout for the following day and still be within legal parameters. The person that would probably specify and or do it, because I have a landscape company that I'd be able to do it, and the legalities would be for me, through my company. Again, a lot of this idea that Nancy and myself, when we were really talking about it, was budget constraints. It wasn't just budget constraints on the size of the trees. It wasn't just anything with just budget. It was also the budget of, we know that it's five minutes, and if we have a hundred people, and we're going to ask somebody like Dina Cat, Declan, or anybody else to take that out of the busy schedule, knowing what's going on with how busy they are, we thought that it wasn't fair. So I did, Nancy and myself, did basically take the burden with the Shade Tree and say that we are going to try to be as separate from the town, but inclusive of, or I apologize, the village as inclusive and as well as separate as we can, to not take up their, their budget. Next.
Okay. Site for tree installations. There you go.
Nope.
Nope, you don't want that one?
No, you have to look it there.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Whoops.
That's all right.
There we go. Got it.
So site for the tree installations. We identified the neighborhoods, and again, speaking with Declan and Nancy Bigos, that we identified that the areas that would go with the municipal we identified that the areas that would go with the municipal areas would be the most efficient way per year to ascertain our goals, as well as that it would be the easiest with advertising as well. And these are interchangeable, where we can have any other areas that we want to change, and obviously we had 2027, 2028 undecided, as far as maybe we'll be able to do every area by then. So the Shade Tree Department providing 100 possible spots in area, using the tree inventory schedule to get us locations for even homeowners that would want to do this, hence the phone calls. Marking locations for planting at the villagers' houses, so after the markout of the utility complex, or complete and the locations for plantings, we want to make sure that the trees are not going to obstruct line of sight, not only for when we're installing them, but for the future of them, and then not to interfere with the utility lines. The location will also be indicated from our tree inventory spots. So again, when we talk about life skills, planting education in the village, a lot of people have landscapers here, so we came up with the plan to educate people on how this is going to get done, instead of just providing a service that this would be possibly some people's first plant that they ever put in the ground. So we demonstrate how this would be done. Shade Tree Commissioner or tree expert will demonstrate at the first tree planting site to the group, the depth and width of the hole, the root positioning, the location of the tree where it should go, determine if the soil needs to be amended, topsoil or anything else when we're digging it, taking out rocks, all these things that are important, because just as it's a small sapling, we know that over a few short years, that they will start to take off and they will start to be a large tree. So all these things do need to be taken into consideration. We also did an estimated time for planting of a tree, and it would be approximately 30 minutes per tree. Again, this coming up with on how many trees that we could possibly put in in a day. We also would inform the people that falls, the best time, soil conditions, temperatures, the cooler weather, and the more moisture that's in the air and the soil. So again, those things are really important for people in general knowledge, not only what we're going to do, but hopefully educate them with plants that they have on their own property. So dates. So we select a date in cooperation with Parks and Rec in the fall, for as this is the best time, and then we communicate the dates with, you know, the volunteers and the Shade Tree Commission to advise them and to be able to have the spots. We say 20 to 100, but even if it's two people, we'll still be very, very happy to take care of that. So once everything is done, as far as the dates are selected, we will have everything marked out and prepared for this time in accordance with Declan as well as Nancy Bigos.
Whoops, hold on a second.
Take it down.
There you go.
So why now? We ask ourselves these questions as we're talking about forest fires, health crisis with the air and breathing, our tree inventory says we need about 4,000 trees to be replaced. So if we do a normal tree to replant, two and a half inch tree by the, I believe it is, there is an ordinance of the size tree that has to be installed. So if we put that in, it's $600 per tree with two and a half inch trunk. So we take 400 trees plus the 200 average number that we also are losing a year, it's 600 trees. So 600 times $600 a tree is $360,000 a year, just to replant those 600 trees that we're in deficiency of, plus of what we're losing. So looking back at the master plan, we know that there's 4,000 open spaces. So 4,000 open spaces at $600 came out $2.4 million over 10 years. This is a place where we felt that, again, sustainability for our budget and to get something in was a great viable option. And again, master plan principle, number four and five is to protect and enhance the canopy. So that was a huge idea on this type of alternative.
It's coming.
It's coming for you, Nancy?
It's coming. Okay. Master plan. Okay. I just want to say that it was an honor to work with Adam to do this. He's such an expert and knows so much about trees and the equipment that goes with them. There's no way I could have dreamed this up without Adam. So anyhow, the master plan. The master plan is near and dear to my heart because it was based on the envisioning meetings that the town came together in community and decided that trees were very, very important to them, and that idea was carried through in the master plan. So that's why I just wanted to mention a few things from that plan. So why are trees important? Thanks. They give off oxygen, they help with pollution, they increase property value, they beautify the town, they decrease the temperature, they slow runoff, they prevent erosion, they filter the water we drink, they reduce stress, they encourage physical activity, they promote social ties, they increase revenue for retail shops because people linger longer on tree-lined streets. So this is, this is a wonderful thing if we could get these trees in the ground. And if this works, maybe we could sort of shift the village procedure to plant smaller trees to get more in. So I don't know, but we'll have to see what happens. We plan on measuring the effectiveness. We'll enter the trial trees in the tree inventory and identify as a trial after the first winter because we want to make sure that they survive. There's no use of putting them in and then having to pull them out if, you know, if a tree fails. So we'll check the survival rate after the second year, and the statistics will be tracked and reported by the Shade Tree Commission.
You missed a page, I'm going to go back on the master plan. So again, when we, when we talk about budget and we talk about our plan of what we, with this, it was also not only measuring the effectiveness, but Nancy and myself on basically a simple Excel spreadsheet that we'd have the locations and we'd drive around the village and the area that we'd be able to take care of that, so that would not have to, again, be another burden on Declan and/or Parks and Rec. So that was, again, something that we're looking to be as helpful as we can with the committee.
Okay.
We're going to back up one page where she missed the master plan.
Back to the master plan again. On the master plan, there's a heading called Analysis of Current and Future Threats. It's around page 46 in the plan, and it says that we can expect increased temperatures and they represent a natural hazard to every community within New Jersey. Ridgewood can expect to see an increase in the number of days that reach a temperature above 95 degrees. While extreme heat and cold events can have detrimental effects on the entire population, the over 65 population and young children or infants tend to be the most affected. In accordance with the 2023 Five-Year American Community Survey estimate, 14.2% of the village's population is 65 and older, and 6.0% is under the age of five. So that's a good chunk of Ridgewood residents who are really vulnerable to these increased So press release, do you want to do that part?
Yeah. So press release, who, what and why? Again, it's posted to social media, which we know on how effective all that is, the new moms and dads and grandpa, congratulations. And it takes to Ridgewood Village, the village website, Parks and Rec website and their Facebook page, Ridgewood Public Schools Weekly Newsletter and their email, and the Shade Tree Commission will be responsible for this release. Again, these are really important, you know, we're looking for 20 to 100 trees, and we're saying, hopefully, I think with everything that is going on in these areas and this space that we have, I think that we'll be able to at least succeed at the minimum number. Other resources, when we looked into this as well, for people to look at is the Urban Forestry, Rutgers, the New Jersey Society of Tree Experts, the New Jersey Shade Tree Federation. All these are great resources that people don't only have to just look at what our presentation is, but they could go a little bit deeper and have that information where that they can find that online to look into how important street trees are for our village. So the village support, the resources, they have questions, we listed who the people were, how to get in touch with them, as well as the members of the Shade Tree Commission, and members as well as the people for the subcommittee that are handling that, which is myself and Nancy, and I do believe, Siobhan, aren't you on this as well?
Yes.
As our subcommittee?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Siobhan.
As a silver agent, because Carolyn will yell at me.
Thank you, Adam. Questions? Comments?
Yeah, do the, these are very young, tender saplings. Do they need deer protection?
They do, well, we would pick a variety that are deer tolerant.
Deer eat everything.
Yeah.
Yes, we can put, yes, we can put up fencing material that they have around the trunks of the trees if need be.
Okay. And I would urge you to put on the press release list the record because they want to hear from us, they're an important partner in good government, and they, they get the word out too. I think this is a great idea. Have other towns done this, or is this just your brainchild?
Well, I, I looked on the web to see what other towns had done, and Seattle has a great program for, you know, for getting trees out to citizens. I did not check the size of the trees that Seattle does, I think they do bigger, but they give them away free. They have more money out there to do more, but they have citizens involved in doing the shade trees. It, it seems to be the only way, the only way to go due to limited budgets for Ridgewood, so.
I think it's a great idea and we should set an example for other towns.
Yeah, I, I'm really excited and I hope that this works, and I'm, I'm praying that a lot of people volunteer because it's the only way it's going to get off the ground. It's heavily dependent on volunteers, without them, this just doesn't happen, so.
Yeah, so I mean, this is wonderful. I just, I had a question. Say I'm a homeowner and I want the tree at my house, so I volunteer and it's plant, you know, and I helped plant at my house. Is this only for people that want a tree at their house, or could you?
No, no, there's two groups, I think we might have skipped a page in here, but there are two groups of volunteers, the people who come out on D-Day and dig the holes and plant the trees in the designated spots. So if you want a tree in front of your house and you agree to water it, you don't have to dig the hole. The volunteers will dig the hole.
But you have to pay for it. Like if you want a tree in your house, you say, "I'll pay for it," but you guys dig it?
You don't pay for it.
So all the funding is actually going to come out of the, the new tree planting trust fund budget, and we have to determine who approves the use of this money.
Oh, okay. Because I thought the homeowner was going to pay $35, which is very minimal.
So the homeowner has no responsibility, except for the watering bill.
And it's, what was it, about 5,000?
5,400 for 100 trees.
And it comes out of the trust fund. Carolyn or somebody can tell me better the name of the trust fund, but that's where it comes.
Okay.
Okay, good.
The new tree replanting trust fund.
Okay, good.
So somebody could say, "I want three trees on," you know, if you're on a corner property and you have a lot of space, could you say? I mean, are there any limitations?
There's going to be limitations because, again, working within the village, myself as a contractor and working with Declan, between the gas lines, the water lines, the overhead wires has limited, so there has been two trees on certain properties, which are now only one, unfortunately. But again, line of sight is huge. You know, we talk about line of sight, my son was just hit on a bicycle on Saturday in Waldeck.
Is he okay?
Yeah, he's fine, thank you. But those are huge things when we start to look at it, and as, again, looking at liability for future, or future liability, we want to make sure that we get this right. So I'd rather plant less trees in the correct position and the correct location than try to put three on a corner.
Right. No, I mean, it's fantastic.
But on the other hand, if you have a huge piece of property and three will fit, fine.
Right. Sounds great. Thank you. I mean, terrific idea.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I just want to make sure before I really leave, sorry, I have to. This is the silver lining of action against our budget, and I think the Shade Tree Commission, you know, I know that it was bitter what we would have to occur because of the sustainability. I'm so proud of everybody, they're not in a patronizing way, but Nancy and Adam are our first committee to come here, we've broken out into working groups, and I think this will serve many purposes. It's going to create an awareness about what a shade tree is, how they come to be, it's going to discuss, maybe even inspire some alternate sources of funding through donations. We're looking to establish a more digital presence and get more people involved. So when this comes out, you know, the idea is, is that we can't afford the larger trees in that plan because the delta between what we're taking down with the EEB and the environment is getting larger and larger each year. So it has been a pleasure to work with you, a little inside, Nancy wrote this whole presentation by hand and Adam typed it in, and I think it's such a labor of love and worthy of acknowledging it.
Siobhan, it was Adam's wife, actually.
Okay, Adam, I was going to leave that.
She had to make sure that it was in the correct format.
Where were you under the bus on that one?
But, you know, we all, we all think trees are important, and this is a way to get more of them, and even if we don't get the same yields, the cost of losing them is a little less, and we are hopeful that this is the first step of many that'll pick up other things. Maybe, maybe a Boy Scout or Girl Scout is listening who wants to make their Gold Star Award additional funding. We need to create an awareness about shade trees and we need to create alternate sources of funding. And I thought this, I know this was long, and I know we talk about trees all the time, but I think this is such a great job. They also are the two co-chairs of Shade Tree, and Carolyn and George are here as well. So I'm just so grateful that we took the next step with the funding and offered an option rather than a complaint, and I'm incredibly grateful, so thank you.
Oh, I have comments and questions. Hold on.
Okay.
So first of all, I always talk about getting off the bench and getting in the game, and my mother-in-law used to have a saying, that many hands make light work, and you guys exemplify and illustrate that, and I love this committee that has taken it upon itself to get this job done. You worked with the village staff. Nancy, I think it's fair to call you our tree conscience here in the village.
Thank you.
Adam, work like this can't get done without a professional like you with your expertise, and I know that if you're planting these in the spring or the fall, you might be just a little busy with your day job, so, you know, for you to put in the extra time and effort when you're already working crazy hours, we all owe you a tremendous debt. This is absolutely amazing. You gave, you came up here with a cohesive presentation to figure out how to do this when money is tight on everything. It was an innovative and solid plan. Nancy, you dreamt it, and Adam, you put the foundations under her dreams, and we can't thank you enough. This is truly amazing. I have one question. So you're getting this money from the trust fund, but $35 is such an attainable number. What if you get donations? Because I have a feeling that if we put it out there at $35 a tree, you might get an awful lot of donations. What is your capacity to do this? How many, how many could you do?
The 100 was limited for, because we want to try to do it for a day. So speaking with Declan, and again, going into it a little bit deeper for the installation of it, that, to try to get the volunteers or somebody else to make sure with the group, with the Shade Tree members that are going with the group, to make sure that you wouldn't be able to do any more than 100. The other reason that we wanted to make sure that we didn't monetize it, not only just for the village, but for the village homeowners, because when they look at a small tree and say, "Okay, it's only $35," I actually spoke with Nancy Brennan Hill, and we spoke that I said I'd go out to a lot of the suppliers and actually ask for the donations for mulch and as well as for the water and donuts so that it wouldn't have to come out, even if we could get something else to help us out. Even if we could get something else to help us out, the idea actually came up with Nancy, and I'd taken a picture before one meeting. My neighbor works at Lowe's, and he actually had a bunch of these whips at his house, and he actually happens to be the manager of the Lowe's in Patterson. And with the village, he was telling me on how many that we purchased, and that's actually how we had, we received the price. I'm sure that, again, being the Village of Ridgewood, him being a resident of the Village of Ridgewood, I'm sure we'd get something donated by Lowe's as well. You know, survivability rate with everything that's going on, we don't know. So, again, doing a test and not to monetize it, and to say, for thirty-five dollars for donation, at least for the first year, until we can make sure that we have the data that supports that this is going to work correctly in this village, that that's where, we, we didn't want to worry about taking somebody's money.
I understand.
But we will take, we'll take the big, the big bucks from the big corporations.
Sure. Well, let's see how this goes, and let's see.
And, and from the council.
Yeah, and let's see what next, yeah, what next year will bring.
Yeah, we could use it as a plan to go forward, but we really need the data. You know, how many people are actually going to volunteer? How many trees survive? How long does it take? And then you can map it out, you can extrapolate it to something else from that, from that core data.
Let's plant a hundred and see where it goes. Thank you all so much. Thanks to the entire committee. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council. Congratulations.
Okay, we'll move on to our discussion items. So Ridgewood Water, there's an additional award for PFOS media treatment at 20 and car facilities. So on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, Calgon Carbon of Moon Township, Pennsylvania, was awarded an initial contract not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars. At this time, an additional forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars is required for additional services not anticipated at the time of the original award. Twenty Treatment Facility, the addition of twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for virgin custom municipal reactivated CMR carbon. This was the first change out for twenty. Virgin carbon was required. All subsequent change outs will be recycled. Car Treatment Facility, addition of twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for virgin makeup to CMR carbon. This addition was necessary since more than twenty percent of the media was burned off during the reactivation process. Therefore, the recommendation is an additional award to Calgon Carbon of Moon Township, Pennsylvania, in the amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars to cover the cost of the additional materials. The funding is in the water utility operating budget.
Questions, anyone?
Okay. The next item is rescinding a resolution for Ford F-750 Packer body. So it's the Ford F-750 chassis, because Ford was unable to produce chassis for this Packer body, so we were forced to look elsewhere. So that will be the rescinding of that resolution. Questions?
Anyone?
Okay.
Nope.
The next one is rescinding a resolution that we adopted in twenty twenty-two for the Ford F-750 gas regular cab chassis, and Route twenty-three Autumn Mall has not been able to provide the vehicle, so we had to find another vendor.
Questions, anyone?
The next item is award of a contract for the Kenworth T-280 chassis. This is a purchase of one new Kenworth model T-280, ten-point-five cubic yard mine rear-loading garbage truck to be used for the collection of household trash from the apartments throughout the village. This will allow the, us the capabilities to safely maneuver in the tight areas at these locations. It awards a contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to Sanitation Equipment of Totoa, New Jersey, not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents, and it's funded through various capital accounts.
Questions?
The next one is a rear loader mount for the Kenworth chassis. It's a new Leach model, thirty-two cubic yard rear loader, and it's to be mounted on the Kenworth chassis. It awards a contract under Sourcewell to Sanitation Equipment of Totoa, New Jersey, not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents. This replaces a two thousand thirteen crane carrier that has exhausted its useful life, and it's currently being used as a yard waste collection truck, and we can no longer get parts for it. The funding is in the solid waste capital budget.
Questions?
The next one is a hose for the sewer jet truck. The Water Pollution Control Facility has a sewer jet truck that is used to clean sanitary sewer mains through the village's collection system. This maintenance is necessary to avoid and minimize sanitary sewer backups. The jet truck is also called upon to clear storm drainage lines. The hose used on the truck has been broken and repaired several times. A replacement hose costs twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seven cents. The previous hose cost about ten thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand dollars less, twenty-three hundred dollars less, in a quote from January third, twenty twenty-two. It'll last in about fifteen months. It's, this hose is supplied by sole source vendor, so it awards a contract to the sole source supplier, JDC of Wharton, New Jersey, not to exceed twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seven cents, and it's funded through the operating budget of Water Pollution Control Facility.
I have a question, Heather.
Okay.
Do we hose these sewer lines and, and stormwater lines on a regular basis, on a systematic, check every single one basis? Or do we just address the problems when they arrive?
I think it's, I think it's both. I, I don't, you know, it, it depends on time that we have, but, you know, certainly the, I know the storm drainage lines, we get in there when we know a storm is coming, because maybe they have filled up, but I do think that they try to do maintenance when they can, and then also, obviously, have to respond to emergency conditions.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay, the next one is a hook lift truck chassis. I'm sorry, no, it's a sewer, emergency storm sewer repair, I apologize. The village was notified of a failed collapse storm sewer in the driveway on North Murray Avenue. After extensive research, it was determined the storm sewer line was actually in a village easement, and the village is responsibility to maintain and repair. Due to the complexity of the repair and leaf collection season, a local contractor, Downstreet Service of Hawthorne, New Jersey, was contacted. This is an emergency repair, and it is in an amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eleven cents. The village still has to restore the residence driveway. This will be funded through the capital account of the Water Pollution Control Facility, and it awards the contract to Downstreet Service of Hawthorne in that amount.
I'm going to recuse myself from this matter?
Any other questions? Okay, the next one is the hook lift truck chassis. The village's Streets Division has capital funds budgeted to purchase a new hook lift multifunction truck. It'll be used for material hauling such as soil, ground, yard waste, snow, salting during ice and snow service, and able to plow snow. It awards a contract under the NJPA Cooperative Purchasing Agreement to Gambrelli Kenworth of New Jersey LLC of Ridgefield Park, New Jersey, not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, and the funding is in the general capital budget.
Questions?
Does this include all the parts, accessories?
This one.
Attachments, you know, that it's gonna need?
My understanding is yes, it may not have to plow that, I'll have to check.
I think that was one of the other things in the packet.
I think that plow is for a different truck, actually.
Yeah. This is an expensive item.
It is. It's a multipurpose item.
What's its anticipated life expectancy?
I can find out.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, and how old was the one we disposed of?
Okay.
Thank you.
The next one is the Ford F-600 chassis. So this awards a contract under state contract for a Ford F-600 chassis, regular cab Mason Dump Truck, to Route twenty-three Autumn Mall of Butler, New Jersey, not to exceed ninety-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars for the vehicle and the Mason Dump Body. The funding is in the park's capital budget.
Questions?
The next one is the snow plow for that vehicle that we just, I just discussed. This purchases a front snow plow for the Ford F-600 Mason Dump Truck. It awards a contract under the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract to FDR Hitches of Hawthorne, New Jersey, not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. The funding is in the park's capital budget.
Questions?
The next one is awarding contract for police vehicles. There's one Expedition and one Explorer. They were ordered in twenty twenty-two, and they're now available. The vehicles will replace Car twenty-three and nine. Both vehicles have mechanical issues beyond repair and have actually been pulled out of service by our Fleet Services Division. So it awards a contract under state contract to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill, New Jersey, not to exceed ninety-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for both vehicles. The funding is in the police capital budget.
Heather?
Yes.
When I Googled it, it looked like the Ford Expedition and the Ford Explorer both have hybrid models. Was that considered at all?
I don't think we have the funding. This, these were ordered last year. So last year, we did not do so. We're going to look at it, but again, as we found out from the presentation we had in May, it's, you know, anywhere from ten to, you know, I think it was twenty-five thousand more for those types of vehicles, depending on the type of vehicle. So we certainly will look at it. This was, as I said, ordered in twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-three, so, but we will look at it.
Well, I'll just tell you, my hybrid vehicle, I haven't filled the tank since March, and you, you save a lot in terms of gas and maintenance with a hybrid vehicle, so you really shouldn't just look at the sticker price.
Okay.
I also think I want to add to the hybrid. I think the presentation was exclusively on just all-electric. If we can get halfway there, I'm worried. We didn't, in that presentation, there was no discussion of, like, the half, and I think if, if they're available, I mean, it's found money, kind of, because it's such old capital, but I would love to see if we could do hybrid, and that way, if it has the efficiencies when it's in electric, they can just convert over.
Right.
I also have a comment, and I know these were ordered last year, so I'm going to go along with this. I'm wondering why, I, I understand that the police much prefer and need a larger vehicle, so I understand the Explorer. The Expedition is the next larger size up.
Correct.
Is there a reason why?
I can find why they wanted my Explorers. I'll find out.
Yeah.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is CBD tree well refurbishment. This is refurbishing the remaining CBD tree wells on Chestnut, Walnut, and Oak Streets. It includes removing twenty-six trees and thirty-one stumps, removal and disposing of the debris, excavation of thirty-seven tree wells, supplying and installing new trees with fertilizer, mulch, and gator bags. So this awards a contract to the lowest responsible quote from Toaday Landscaping Contractors, Inc. of Oakland, New Jersey, not to exceed forty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The funding is in the park's capital account.
Questions?
I think this is great. I'd love to finish it up in the CBD. Do I understand correctly that this means the West Side is done?
That I don't know. I'd have to confirm that.
I just want to make sure the West Side is treated.
Sure.
Equitably.
I will check. Okay. The next item is Grant Management Company for the Health Department. They're in the process of attaining two grants totaling more than five hundred thousand dollars. The Health Department is in need of a grant management service to assist with procurement and reporting of both grants. The recommendation is to award the contract to Strategic Health Advisors, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. The funding is through the grant itself. The team is newly retired health officers, and others who have used them have been very satisfied.
I have a question and a comment. What do they need, what is it that this person will be doing, or this company will be doing in terms of procurement and reporting?
Well, basically, they'll probably be doing the recording, being detailing how the grant is being used, so, because it all has to be reported back to the originator of the grant.
Got it. And procurement, has it not already been procured? I'm just curious.
I think, I think, and I will double check.
And I'm just trying to understand, I'm not, yeah, I'm not being.
Yeah, no, I think the procurement is what we are buying for, through the grant, and then the other is reporting back to what, you know, to the state, I think it's from a state grant.
Right.
That, you know, what it is we bought, how much it cost, you know, what we did with it, that type of thing.
Right. And now my comment is that the Health Department is kicking butt over here.
They are.
They are absolutely amazing. Dawn Strulo and her staff pulling in a half million dollars, and this is not their first money.
No, no, this is the continuing.
She just keeps finding money.
Well, the state keeps giving money, which is great, and it's wonderful that Dawn continues and her team continue to go for these grants, because there are many health officers out there who aren't doing it.
Yep.
And, you know, it's allowed us to provide much-needed services and additional staffing so that we can provide additional health-oriented programs, as well as it helped us with our vaccine clinics when we did them here in Ridgewood. So it's been very, very helpful. We've also been able to hire a social worker, which is another thing we're going to discuss, actually, right now, and this has allowed us to get that service, which we wanted for several years and couldn't afford it. And so our social worker, we were able to contract with in twenty twenty-two, and it's to assist village residents. We have found, actually, that the need has increased for her services, so the Strengthening Local Public Health Capacity Program grant will cover the cost to increase the new contract to eighty-nine hours per month. So that's from July first to June thirtieth of next year, and it's not to exceed eighty-nine hours per month, and the amount is eighty thousand one hundred dollars for those hours. So we'll be able to use the social worker more often. I know the Health Department, as well as the Police Department, has used a social worker in various instances, and has been extremely helpful.
And a giant kudos to the Health Department, to Dawn and her staff on all of this, and providing better and greater services to our residents.
Absolutely.
I, I wasn't quite clear on whether Ridgewood has gotten the grants yet. So would this?
We have.
They have? Because the way it's written, it says the Health Department is in the process of attaining two grants, so I'm not really.
These are, these are additional grants. So these grants usually run from July first, because it's a state fiscal year, so July first to June thirtieth, and then so, in, in other words, they're applying for these grants for that, the two that we discussed first, for the grant, what's it called, the grant management company? So this is a continuation of the grants that they keep rolling out every year. So they have, they are in the process, well, we don't know yet, I mean, it's not July first. It tends to be, unfortunately, that we don't hear till after the July first date, but it has pretty much been that we've gotten every single grant that we've applied for. So I don't, and they kind of, they work with the state, and they kind of give them indication that, yes, this will be funded through a grant, so they're not just applying for something that won't be accepted, you know? So I, I don't have concerns. All of the grants we've gotten, we've done this way.
Okay. I was just wondering if we should make the contract with Strategic Health Advisors to be contingent on.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
Okay. And then as to the, the additional eighty-nine hours a month, I can certainly see how this is important for the Police Department and the Health Department and the social worker situations. I didn't understand the reference that this would be helpful for the Building Department.
There are times when, I don't know specifically, let me, let me find out for Building, because I'm not sure a hundred percent.
There was actually a recent matter, and actually, Heather and I dealt with it, and that's probably what they're referring to.
Probably.
Where there was a person who was complaining about the conditions of their rental apartment, and a, and, and the Building Department sent people out there, inspected it, found it was fine, that there really weren't any. that there really weren't any significant violations of the building code. But what they determined, what they got out there, was that the, the person who complained was in need of a social worker.
Okay.
And that, I, I have a feeling that that is what this is in reference to. And so Dawn sent the social worker out there to help this person better understand her situation.
Gotcha.
And it's been helpful too for our older residents. I know that during COVID with the Adopt a Senior, we found people who really needed services. And we've, we've heard of others in the meantime. And the social worker has been helping them get the services that they're entitled to and need. So, okay. So the next one is the Child Lead Exposure Prevention Project. So the Bergen County Department of Health Services is able to obtain a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health. It enables the county to provide lead poisoning services detection to all seventy towns within the county. We have a memorandum of understanding agreement that we sign, and there's no cost to the village. And we've been using this since two thousand nineteen, and it has been very successful.
Questions, anyone?
The next one is a handgun purchase. This awards a contract under state contract for handgun purchases to Whitmer Public Safety Group, Inc. of Coatsville, Pennsylvania, not to exceed sixty six thousand one hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty cents. The funding is from the police capital budget.
Questions?
Yes. Am I reading this correctly? This is for the purchase of fifty guns? Is that right?
It looks that way, yes.
I think it's fifty five.
How, how are you counting fifty five?
Oh wait, I'm sorry, that's the site, never mind.
And then, I didn't even know that guns use batteries. That's interesting. It also includes for the magazines. And some of these look like they're for sighting, but I can't quite understand it.
I can have them give an explanation of what they are, what all these components are, if you want.
Right, because then there are optics and that would, to me, mean more sighting. And I, I didn't understand that. I do understand why some have to be right handed and others have to be left handed.
Sure.
But I, I wasn't quite sure what I'm reading. I just don't know that much about guns.
Okay.
And, oh, what happens? So that basically covers our whole police force. What happens to the old guns?
There is probably a protocol for getting rid of them. Matt, do you know?
Yeah, I do. We've done it a few times. The Attorney General's Office has provided a process and a protocol to take care of old guns that aren't being used anymore and are actually incinerated, I believe. I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
Wow. And how old are the guns that we'd be getting rid of?
That one, that one I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to find out.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is a contract for maintenance of our phone system. So this awards a contract under the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract for a three year maintenance of the village's phone system to VoIP networks of Cherry Hill, New Jersey, not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred and eight dollars per year for a three year contract. As usual, we would award it the first year, second year, third year. And the funding is in the operating budget.
Questions?
The next one is a donation. As all of you know, because I think you've all been to the gatehouse at Health Barn, I'm sorry, at Haverknuckle Park where Health Barn is located, there is a back patio. And on that back patio, they hold events, they hold classes, and it's very hot in the summer and in the warmer months. So Stacy Antin, who's the Director of Health Barn USA, has offered to donate the purchased and professional installation of a twenty foot by twenty foot retractable awning, which would be permanently installed directly onto the back of the house and extend over the patio to be controlled with a handheld control device. It would be of great benefit to all who participate in programs, courses, dinners or special events at the gatehouse. So it's seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the purchase and installation.
Questions?
That's incredibly generous of her. She is really invested in that project.
I agree. The next one is a refund of a tax court judgment. This is for forty forty six Godwin Avenue. They filed a successful tax appeal for a property assessment for the years twenty twenty to twenty twenty three. The stipulation is that we are to refund the amount of sixty seven thousand dollars, which represents the overpayments for such tax years.
Questions?
I, I just, I just want to say, that's a huge tax appeal. I mean, I know it covers three years, but, so it's about twenty two thousand?
Yeah.
I can respond to it. This is, this is Whole Foods. And there were actually another four years that were involved that were appealed by the property owner that were withdrawn as part of the settlement. We had our assessor look at it. We also hired an expert appraiser with regard to this to give us an idea of just where for the years of twenty twenty one and twenty two it's going to be, you know, where this is going to be. Taxpayer had paid the taxes at the full assessment as it was from the prior years. And with the reduction, there was an excess that had been paid. And part of the deal was to refund some of it. The rest of it was to be given a credit. I don't know exactly what the tax, annual taxes were for that property, but it's a, it's a significant assessment. So sixty seven thousand doesn't even, I mean, covers about half. And that was the, the deal. We don't usually give refunds, but because this was a number of years and had been a number of years that were taken down, as well as the ones that were appealed and reduced, it was pretty much an equitable recommendation from not only our appraiser assessor, but also, you know, in discussions with the court, and we felt it was the right thing to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is another acceptance of a donation. Matthew Rossi of Rossi Paint Stores in Ridgewood has graciously donated the paint and materials required to paint the Pride Stripes at Vanna Square. The total retail value of the paint and materials is two hundred and eighty seven dollars and thirty five cents. So we'll have a resolution to accept this donation.
This is not the first, the first donation by Rossi Paints. They are, they have shown themselves to be so committed to Ridgewood, and I really appreciate their support.
Matt Rossi's a good man. Whenever somebody needs paint for some village project, his phone rings and he has yet to say no. So thanks, Matt. Always appreciate it.
I also want to say on behalf of the Pride Committee how thankful we are for him and having this happen. Little fun fact, not all colors of the rainbow are readily available due to supply chain issues. Not only did he donate it, but he secured it, and we're incredibly grateful for it. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the Amendment Order Ordinance for Contributions, Gifts and Donations. I know that several people worked on this, so maybe Matt, you want to start on that? For the amendment to contributions and donations?
Well, I was just going to say Frank is here. That's.
Frank is here. This, I think, was, I forget which committee that it originally came out of.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Frank was a member of Parks and Rec. Provided a, an ordinance that he wrote up himself. And it's been worked on, it's been reviewed, it's been worked on, it's been reviewed, it's been worked on, it's been reviewed. And basically what we wanted to make sure is that any, anybody or entity that wanted to make a gift or donate any item of value to the village understood what considerations were going to go into it, the process that it was to, to do in terms of getting, getting the gift considered, the review process, the, all the different aspects of what might go into it. And I think if you, if you read this, I think you, you understand that it's a, a very fair process where the village has the final say in what gets accepted. We get the final say in, in terms of how it gets accepted. Many people have wanted to, over the years, donate trees or donate monuments. And truthfully, I think the Parks and Rec Department are kind of saturated with some of these things to find locations for them that doesn't disrupt the use of the park or, or the look of the park. So we wanted to just provide that for everybody to understand that we've got considerations that are, that sometimes deal with the, you know, the graciousness of the gift that have to deal with the placement of the gift so that it is a decision that can be made by the, by the village. And, and that's, that's basically what this does. You know, others who worked on it can certainly comment on it. But it was a, certainly a, a process of consideration and care. And, and this is the ordinance that we came up with.
Questions or comments?
I think we're going to make Matt make a bee joke. Come on, Matt.
Frank, Frank is, Frank is the king. I wouldn't want to usurp his, his role as the great bee joke joker of all time. But the, but the buzz around Frank is that he knows what he's doing.
Nice. Anyone else?
I, I did just want to just say thank you to Frank. I mean, one of the, the greatest things about the committees is when you have somebody who is a first drafter, who lays it all out there knowing some of it's going to get edited. And I'm really grateful to Frank. Paul and I sort of dovetailed this. It started before I got there, and then I ended up pushing it with Matt. And so this is so great, and I'm so thankful, Frank, that you took the first stab at it. And it's been lovely. As I said, it didn't sting.
Frank, I keep saying it tonight, many hands make light work. I know how much time and effort and research you put into this. And while it was tweaked along the way, this is your ordinance. And I can't tell you how much this council appreciates the time that you spent on this where maybe some other people would have looked at their shoes when they were asked to do this, but not you. I still remember. You volunteered and you got this done, and thank you so much. We, we are all grateful. By the, by the way, met your daughter the other day at the elementary school tour, and she said, you know my dad.
The next, the next item is taxi stand RFP. So we have two areas of the taxi stand. One is the one that's on the tracks, that's up the stairs. I don't know how to explain it other than that. It's in fairly good shape, certainly something we could, you know, bid out. The downstairs one, which is actually on Broad Street, is small, needs work. Certainly, we could look into, you know, getting it into shape so that it could be rented out as well. It's a much smaller space. I, I think, you know, the, the top space could probably be done quickly. The downstairs, we'd have to do some improvements to before we could bid it out. So it's really just to get the council's desire, or is that, is this what you want to do? I know that various people have inquired about it. There is a contractor who's looked at it and has indicated he may have an interest. There may be other people who have an interest and perhaps doing something else with it. So if you are interested in doing it, we can certainly bid it out. I don't know if you want to specify, you know, what type of business can go in there. We may not have to, and we can see what we get. Because this way it could open it up to various possibilities, so.
I just want to understand, this is for people to rent the taxi stand?
Correct.
We're not talking about making improvements to it at this time?
Not, I don't think the top part, we, I don't think we really need to do too much. We, I just have to see, you know, make sure that everything, there's one bathroom in it. Make sure the bathroom works, things like that, the water's running, you know, we'd have to reconnect all that.
We don't necessarily have to do that.
Right, but.
Because that, that's a function of the rent. And so, and.
Sure.
A, a potential tenant taking it as is would, we could make an adjustment in the rent.
Sure.
So that that person, that, or that company could then take it over, do the repairs themselves, make their renovations, make them according to the type of store or restaurant they wanted to put in there.
Right. Or office, or office, it could be an office.
I'm all for this. I think it's terrific.
So just two things, because I've been driving Heather and Matt crazy. When Evan and I came in here, we, we looked for a list of our assets and which generated revenue and what do we own and what don't we. And the taxi cab station on the east side of the tracks used to be very vibrant when I was growing up. It was an actual taxi cab station. And there were a couple of reasons I just, because there's the public here. The train, before the massive improvement at the train station, used to actually let out on that side. So the upper part, that's in fairly good condition, in my opinion. In need of a paint, maybe check the plumbing and some carpet, and we're good to go. Seems like we could get some revenue, create an awareness that the area exists. The downstairs is in need of more love and attention. And, you know, I'd be willing, and I think we should all talk about this, we should cast a very wide net because it's unused space. It could potentially be, you know, on the bottom, if we become a tourism place, a space for other organizations. That needs work. But by getting it out there, we can see what people come back with for intended uses. It was, it was a really interesting trip to go to these places. I, every time we find someplace new, I say to Matt and Heather, let's go. And they have indulged me, and it's an interesting space to walk by. And I do think we could find some good tenants, soften our tax dollars. And at the same point to your, if we can't get the rent we want, maybe we can get some of the improvements that we want. The Health Barn Award gift that just came in is so interesting because she's paying us rent and she's improving the property. And that's really what I would love to see these other properties do. So if you go by there, you'll see it more. The downstairs is totally separate. There's two rentals, but I think we toss it out there and see what we can get for it.
And just if I can add something. Siobhan's web goes even further than just Heather and me. Goes to Chris, who was with us, and Chris knew of possibly a contractor who was interested in getting us, getting that upper level space. But at the same time, it needs to be bid out and that, you know, there are opportunities out there for that. And it's an effort to try, as, as Siobhan said, to upgrade the facility and at the same time make it usable and create some revenue. So that was the advantage.
What's not to like?
As I said, we could definitely do the top part. The bottom part, I think, I, I don't know that we can do anything with it right now. You know, as far as renting it out.
What's the problem with the bottom part?
You need to go on the field trip.
Yeah.
You can climb up and go on the field trip. We wanted to do that.
I definitely, I definitely want to see it. And, and I will, and I will tell you that without even seeing it, there are, there are people who, who for the right rent
Okay.
will take over a space
Okay.
that needs a lot of work, and it's just an arithmetic problem.
Okay.
So.
All right, okay.
Let's go take a look at it.
Yes, we will, definitely. Next is the Maintenance of Park and Ride. I think this came from the council chat, right?
So on Saturday, Evan and I met with a resident who is adjacent to the Park and Ride. And on Friday, Matt brought me up to speed as to the, the situation. We do not own, meaning we, the Village of Ridgewood, do not own the Park and Ride. And prior to the council reassembling, there had been an agreement where the village took really good care of the property. We used to take the money for the people who parked the cars pre-COVID. And at some point, I think in twenty twenty one, that relationship was severed. So this neighbor came in to advocate for her property and the fact that the Park and Ride, which is a function of NJDOT, has room to be a better neighbor. She was lovely. We felt bad in the past, the village. And Bob Rooney had planted some trees as a buffer. You know, she's living in sort of, you know, next to a bad neighbor, not being overly critical, but a, a bad neighbor. And we were hoping that this council would support her in contacting NJDOT to encourage them on the steps that she felt would help planting some trees, discussing some of the remediation and establishing a formal connection through the resident who's adjacent with us writing a letter on top of it. Evan?
Yeah, no, no, and thank you, Siobhan, for getting this on the agenda. The resident brought us some pretty telling pictures, and I think calling New Jersey Department of Transportation a bad neighbor was really on point. The property had been taken care of by the Village of Ridgewood fairly well until that, until the relationship was severed. What I was proposing, and I know, Siobhan, I think you somewhat agree, was the village contacting the Department of Transportation, ask them to be a better neighbor to, if they're, if they're not going to pay us to do it, that they need to take care of the property better, plant some more trees so there's a buffer between this woman's property as well and the, and the parking lot. And then she could obviously pursue her own letter writing as well. But I think advocating behalf of the village here in favor of our residents makes a lot of sense.
I just want to understand. We don't have a relationship with the Department of Transportation for this property anymore?
Correct.
No, we don't have that. No, we don't have that.
We, we used to take...
I know, I know we used, I know we used to. And have we reached out to the Department of Transportation?
We have on occasion.
To, to take, to address this issue?
No, because we were not aware of it.
So, in speaking to this resident, she had said she was aware of some of the back and forth, and apparently, the Department of Transportation, at least when she was reaching out to the contact, was not responsive, which is why we suggested perhaps the village advocating might get more attention from this individual.
I would, I would think. So, what is...
Out of hopes as well.
Yeah, so what is being proposed here?
That the village council write a letter as a whole.
Oh.
Yeah.
Got it.
And Evan's gonna write the first draft.
He's gonna write a mean letter. Good.
Okay, so we can go forward with that. The next item is the administration of government, which we realized was incorrect, thanks to Mr. Loving, so thank you for that. But I think this corrects what the error was, so we'll look at it and make sure, and then we can reintroduce this so that we can move forward. This is for the reorganization that occurs, and how the mayor, and deputy mayor, and president pro temp were chosen.
So, I just have to ask, if...
Sure.
If the five members can't agree, what is, what is the remedy now that we're removing the highest vote getter getting it?
It's never happened.
I know it's never happened, I'm just wondering, I mean, you know what's gonna happen the next election.
Okay, that's what is gonna happen. We don't have anything. Do you have a recommendation?
I mean, I guess, I wasn't part of the conversation, but what was the argument against the default? It seemed like a nice sort of nuclear option in case the five could agree.
The problem with this default...
Right.
Is that only those council people who were up for election...
Right.
...were then eligible under the default provision. Now, I agree with you, and I was thinking the same thing, that we need a default provision that allows for any member of the council to become mayor or deputy mayor. Now, I, I have two thoughts in mind. One is that it could go according to whatever number of votes each of those council people had, every person on the council had gotten when they ran for council, which now gives us a default. It could be from two, excuse me, from two years ago, or it could be from eight years ago. Well, no, four years ago, at the most. No, two years ago.
Two.
Two, actually. So, so that does it. I mean, the other is, you could also draw straws at that point.
That's true.
But I, but again, I agree with you that there should be some default provision. This one was inequitable, and I think it was just there on the books for a long time. Again, boy, you heard me rail against this, and, and I just didn't look closely enough at it. So, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. So, what do you, what do you think of that?
I, I think that we should have a default option, but by having it, you know, everybody, everybody's vote count when they were elected, it also is inequitable, in my opinion, because on the presidential years, we have so many more people vote, so...
True, true.
Then that would be a...
Well, especially now that we have a November election, whereas before we did not.
Right.
So...
Before, it would have been okay, because the playing field is...
What other towns have done is that they've taken the council member, or the member of the governing body, who has the most years, as an elected official. And that one has been considered, the word senior, for lack of another word, but certainly that would be the senior council member to act in an instance of a default such as this.
And I like that suggestion personally, and the reason for that is, I think it's very difficult for someone who's never been an elected official to step into the mayor position.
Absolutely.
And, and then if it weren't the senior member, it would be the next senior member, if the senior member didn't want it for some reason. But I, I think mayor is a, although you're all equal, I, I realize that. What I'm saying to you is it's a different position, and I think our mayor now would probably say that that's true.
I think that's a very fair statement.
Okay. So, so I like the seniority.
I don't disagree with the seniority, but then what do you do with the tie? Right, if you have two people who were elected in the same year get reelected, then you have two people with the exact same amount of seniority.
So, then you go to the votes. I, I think a couple of things...
You have rock, paper, scissors, maybe between the two of them?
Then you go to the votes. Yeah, because if they were elected together, then it's, then it's fair.
They were elected the same year.
Right.
They were elected the same year, so then it is...
So, we write it as the most seniority, and in the event of equal seniority, at that point, the highest vote getter of the two, in the same year that they were elected, first elected, right. Now, again...
Or it could be three.
Or it could be three is right, yeah, even better.
Sure.
So, I, I like that. Again, I suspect we'll never use it, but I think there should be a default option, just no other reason to force the five to try to figure something out.
Right. I'm good with that.
Yep. I love it. I think it's great. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so we'll...
Well, I stick with rock, paper, scissors as the back of the...
Well, that's the, that's the super default option.
Super default, gotcha.
Okay, so we'll add that in.
And then Heather, that goes in just two readings, because it'll go via ordinance? It's, it's, it's an actual, so we'll go on next week, and then 20 days later, because this, this last pass...
You're hoping we can make it.
It's a brand-new ordinance.
Okay.
It has to be started from the beginning.
We can't just change the default?
No, it's, it would be a substantive change.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is three-year cooperative agreement renewal for community development. This is HUD funds the county's community development block grants, and every three years, we have to indicate that we're still interested. So, there are two resolutions. One is to be included in it, and the other one is to allow the agreement to be signed. The next item is countywide fire mutual aid agreement. The Bergen County Board of Commissioners recently took action to approve a countywide fire mutual aid agreement. This new countywide fire mutual aid agreement eliminates the annual obligation for a municipality to enter into individual mutual aid agreements with neighboring towns. This move will bring Bergen County in line with the majority of other counties around the state, which have already established a single countywide fire mutual aid agreement. Fire Chief John Judge has reviewed this, has spoken to some neighboring towns, and approves of Ridgewood moving forward with this countywide mutual aid agreement. Okay. The next one is renewal of liquor licenses. This is an annual resolution, which approves all the liquor licenses. I'm very happy to say that in order to renew liquor licenses, they have to have tax clearance certificates. I'm very happy to say that all of them have their tax clearance certificates, so we can approve them all at once, which is wonderful.
And I know I've asked this before, but the, the amount of money for a liquor license is set by statute.
It's set by state statute, and we're at the max. Except for, except for club licenses.
Which we're not gonna do, but yeah.
Which is, yeah, so other than that, yep, it's $2,500, and it's been that for, gosh, decades.
Kills me. Should be more.
And we still have one in one out, one commercial?
We, all we, they're pocket licenses. They're not cited licenses.
Okay.
So, they are owned, so, but they are not cited.
Okay.
We also have, the last item is appointment of an acting municipal court administrator. This is done in the case of a municipal court administrator or deputy court administrator not being able to, having a leave of absence for some reason. So, this will appoint Teresa Ernest, who is certified to be a municipal court administrator as our alternate, what is it, acting municipal court administrator. Judge David Fund approves of this appointment.
Questions? Anyone? And that's the end of our agenda, so we will return to public comments.
Cynthia O'Keefe, 542 West Saddle River Road. Good evening, everybody. First of all, Lorraine, happy birthday, and Mayor Vagianos, congratulations on your grandchild.
Thank you.
Fabulous news. I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't speak a little bit about sustainability and the trees. I think three-quarters of tonight's meeting had, you know, trees being discussed. I think the Shade Tree Committee is doing great work. It's too bad Adam and Nancy left, because I would have liked to have, you know, told them what a great job I think they did, and I think it's a great initiative. One of the things that, you know, is constantly on our mind, you know, obviously, people living in the Shedler community are the trees, and, you know, we've, Christina earlier this evening talked about, you know, the PFAS, and, you know, obviously, that's number, number one in terms of concern, but also cutting down those trees. And we talked about sustainability tonight, and sustainability is about maintaining the integrity of what we have. We have a beautiful natural gem. So, I guess I'd like to implore the committee that, or the council, excuse me, that if Peter Primavera comes back, and, you know, we, for whatever happens with Shippo, the plan gets rejected, you know, it would be great if there was, would be an opportunity to revisit and to look at a more sustainable way of maintaining that property. I think when we had that April 12th meeting, one of the gentlemen who works for Parks and Rec, I, I don't know who he is, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but he talked about what a fabulous job was, that was being done at Habernicle, and there are a lot of comparisons to, you know, between Habernicle and Shedler. And I guess Health Barn has, you know, had this great success. So, I was a little curious and went by one day. It happened to actually be closed, but they were hosting a private party. So, one of my questions is, does Ridgewood get money for that? You know, how much money does Ridgewood make off of what, you know, Health Barn brings in? I think what, what I noticed when I was there was they were doing a little community garden, you know, teaching the children about sustainability. So, if, if that's the case, what kind of message are we sending to our kids that, you know, here's Shedler, and we've cut down all the trees to put in this ball field, and, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. So, I constantly go back and, you know, try to understand how we can walk the talk. And we've got, you know, the Green Amendment, and the Green Team, and Shade Tree, and all these wonderful things that are going on, you know, the Pride Day planting, which I took part in, it was wonderful and very organized. So, thanks again to Lorraine for that. I had a great time and met some wonderful people, but, you know, I constantly go back, and I just want to see the human side of what can be done to salvage that neighborhood. I really believe, and I think, Paul, I'm not gonna quote you, but I think one day you did say, and I, maybe I'm wrong, and you could correct me, that most of the trees were already cut down, and if that's the case, and we are salvaging many of those, you know, existing trees, that would be such a gift, and I think we need to embrace that gift, because, you know, especially in light of what happened yesterday and today with this smog and this smoke, I could barely breathe. We have all these particulates and this, this horrible, toxic, you know, these fumes and everything. We need those trees to protect that neighborhood. We have babies too, and grandchildren, and dogs, and, you know, families that are dependent. You know, we need that. This isn't a want, this is a must-have. And so, I beg you, if there's an opportunity to go back and revisit in any way possible, even the smallest little thing, to have some kind of a, you know, a committee put together where you could talk to neighbors, and we can find a way to make it a beautiful park that people can enjoy, you know, I don't think anybody would, would, you know, be opposed to that, and the neighbors for sure would love that opportunity. So, you know, I'm kind of not speaking for them, but I'm, I'm imploring you that I believe that's the right thing to do, that we could revisit this and, and really walk the talk, and look at the optics of what is happening. You know, people keep saying, you know, if I talk to people, whether they live in Ridgewood or outside of Ridgewood, they say, "How is it possible that you could have, you know, vote on a Green Amendment and then vote on turf? That's gonna, you know, ruin people's drinking water. We have wells." It just doesn't make sense. So, I just beg you that we have to do the right thing, and now's the opportunity to go back and, and take a, maybe a second look and be innovative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Frank, the bee man, Mortimer, 426 Van Buren Street. Happy birthday, Lorraine. Congratulations, grandpa.
Thank you.
And first, I'd like to say thank you for all the bee jokes tonight. I didn't ever get old. But I'm here just to say thank you for your support on the ordinance, and while I may have started it, it was a team effort, and you're bringing it across the finish line, and I just want to say thank you for that. And additionally, just to add some more detail to it, is this, this ordinance will help the village continue to control and keep all of our parks beautiful, which is my motivation. You know, we talked, during your initial reports, you talked about different uses in Van Nest, and that's just one of many parks that we have, and this ordinance will help make sure that they continue to be beautiful. We've, you've said, and the Shade Tree said that we're almost a perfect town, and this helps maintain that. And it also provides pretty strict guidelines on how things will happen, so then that way we can match people's generosity with the village needs that'll help all of our residents for years to come. So, thank you all.
Nice job, Frank.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Boyd A. Loving, 342 South Irving Street. I want to address an issue that was raised tonight by Deputy Mayor Perrin, and that is, it is unfortunate as a Ridgewood resident that we are restricted to water use, but in Glen Rock, Wycoff, and Midland Park, other neighbors or other municipalities are served by Ridgewood water, they don't seem to have the same ordinance and restrictions that we do. Now, I understand that Glen Rock is talking about going to it. I remember this issue coming up from several years ago, and Wycoff basically saying, "We don't want any part of it." They're using the same water system that we are. They're drinking and, and using the same water that we are to water our lawns, yet the residents in Ridgewood are restricted, and it doesn't seem as though Ridgewood Water can do anything about enabling restrictions in these other communities. Quite frankly, I think it's unfair, but it seems as though there's no legal action we can take against them. But it just strikes me as kind of unusual, that there is nothing that we can do to enforce these water restrictions to take place in towns that are using the same water that we are, but yet, at least for me, who's using a manual system, I'm restricted to watering two days a week, while people down the street from you on Grove Street and in Glen Rock across the street seem to be able to do anything they want to without fear of anything happening to them. I would encourage this council to perhaps appoint a representative, to meet with a representative from the governing bodies of these other municipalities, to see that, what we can do about this. Again, this seems to just be unfair to the residents of Ridgewood, who use the same water system that these communities don't want to, aren't willing for some reason to participate in this. Now, if memory serves me correctly, I know why, for some reason, I know why, I have one reason why they might not be willing, and that is a lawsuit that was filed many years ago, when it was alleged that the Village of Ridgewood was using revenues from the water system to support other municipal operations. This may be their payback to us, but maybe we can work something out. So, if you could appoint a representative from the council to, to take the lead on this, so that there's equity among the municipalities, we're all using the same system, we're all vying for the same water and the same aquifer, it, it just bogs my, it just, I'm just annoyed by the fact that I can drive around in a Wycoff, they're watering at will, while in Ridgewood, we're not able to. So, do anything about it, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd.
Christina Millian, 530 West Saddle River Road. I'll be fast. I just wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Perrin for agreeing to at least try to figure out how we can get a meeting, just an education meeting with Ridgewood Water and a bunch of the other contractors. I think that would be hugely helpful, and I just want to say thank you for that gracious offer. And I just would also like to say I loved what the Shade Tree Commission is doing. I, I want to support it. I think donations are a great call as well, but I still struggle with like the overall strategy of this council, and I'm sorry, but I just do. It's like we are helping people get PFAS and cancer-causing chemicals out of water. We are putting in an artificial turf field, a new one, next to people with private well water, into our community near Saddle River, mind you. We believe in trees. The quote was, "We all think trees are important," and we're removing acres of trees that are left over, thriving at Shedler. I just fundamentally struggle with your strategy and your external talking points, and to back up what Cynthia said... And to back up what Cynthia said, like, we should all be walking and talking this together hand in hand. And there's so many people that like want to come together and support so many of these great initiatives that are awesome, done by volunteers, but it's very hard to struggle. And as the Delaware River Keepers Network wrote to you all, it's selective and hypocritical, unfortunately. And I would really just ask that you all come together on what you believe in and what you don't, and just have that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Ann Loving, 342 South Irving Street. I'm hoping there's going to be some follow-up about No Moe May. We very happily participated. Our grass got super long. You couldn't even really see the sign afterwards. But, and I was very excited to hear that the volunteers, which we weren't asked to volunteer, but those who did, that no ticks were found on their property, because that's a big concern as pet owner, well, also as human beings. But Frank had told me in a separate conversation that there was no scientific, I'm going to misquote it, I'm sorry, Frank, but that there was no reason to expect that there would be more ticks just because the grass grew longer. My particular lawn, we had no flowers at all. So there were no bees. We are retired. We sit out front a lot. I saw no insects at all on my lawn, so I wasn't sure whether this was just a feel-good thing, which, again, we happily participated in, or whether it was actually doing something. And someone suggested on social media that maybe instead of No Moe May, we should do, I forget how they said it, something like So Mo, where we could either give out or suggest to people flower seeds that would be, that people could scatter in their gardens that would provide flowers for pollinators rather than just letting your grass grow long. Because again, we saw no insects in our lawn. Now, we don't actually have clover in our front lawn. My backyard, another story. It's all weeds. But anyway, so I hope there's going to be some serious dissection of how that went because we were happy to participate, but I'd be happy to know if it really was a success. People are saying it was a success because of how many participated, but that doesn't make it a success. So maybe the seed thing, maybe I'll talk to Frank about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else?
I'd like to end on, I'm Carolyn Jacoby, 160 Godwin Avenue. Ann Loving, there was a terrific point in Green Ridgewood that initiated this through, with Frank and Michael Fearty. And there's much discussion about what the science leads us to understand about why you want grass areas or grassy areas or green areas to grow to a certain height to encourage and support the pollinators, right? We really weren't concerned, I certainly wasn't, about longer grass and ticks. That was an interesting concern that was brought up. For me, the concern is the increase of food sources for the pollinators. And science is demonstrating that clover and different native lower ground covers will be able to grow within a two-week period to flower, and that bee ground, native ground bees can get the benefit over a two-week period. And if you let your grass grow for three weeks or four weeks, it's not increasing the amount of flowers that are available for the pollinators to use. So my personal position, and what I've been supporting in others, is that you mow your lawn every other week, every two weeks. And if we do that, think about we're reducing lawn mowing and the use of all that equipment by half. And it's not just for a one-month period, and then people go back and are mowing every week and reducing whatever available sources for the pollinators. So I think we, being the Shade Tree Commission, is an auxiliary of that discussion with Green Ridgewood. And other advisory groups can come back and make suggestions for how we can really benefit. And if you, if you mow every two weeks, the visual impact on your lawn is much different than if you're letting it grow for a month and then you have to remediate. I think we will get more people interested and said, yeah, I can do that. So anyway, Ann, that was a great point. Thank you for that, and thank you for your support for the adopt a sapling. We're really very pleased to move forward with that. Siobhan, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn, for everything.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close. Public comment, yes. By all means, but I'm going to close public comment first.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did want to say that No Moe May was a success in that approximately 305 homes participated in it. And this is a first step towards realizing that maybe we can live without manicured lawns. And lawns are a monoculture, which is not natural. And maybe we can, our next step can be to move away from fertilizer. And maybe the step after that can be to move away from lawns altogether. So this was successful in reconceiving how we see nature and how we see beauty.
And Mayor, if I can just briefly, real quick, just responding to the issues raised with regard to enforcement of the water restrictions on the other communities. I just know that over the years and since Rich Galby's been the director, he has usually made the annual effort to educate, communicate, inform the other municipalities to what the restrictions are, what's required, and makes the request. Now, I understand that we don't get a lot of assistance from one of the towns mainly, and then I think Glen Rock now is, certainly when we brought in the PFAS Treatment Center, they welcomed it and wanted us to get to it as quickly as we could. So they've got a, they've got a, you know, a much more congenial and direct approach with regard to trying to combat the problems than some of the other communities. But it's never a conversation that should end just because you're getting shut out at different times. And I think they still do it. They still go there on an annual basis to try and make sure that everybody understands why this is. And it really has to do more with enforcement than anything else.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all I need to say.
And let me just follow, I want to follow up on, just because Matt made this point.
Yeah, Boyd, we, this was a concerted effort this year because we are midway or past midway on our remediation project for PFAS. And it's projected that sometime in 2026, we will be done. And each year, we bring on more wells that treat, that remediate PFAS. And the pitch, I was in close contact personally with the mayors and councils of all the towns for this purpose so that we would, in the summer, because it's all about summertime lawn watering. And if, the pitch we made was if we can, for just a couple of years, in the summertime, restrict lawn watering, that's it. We will all benefit by drinking cleaner water, every community. But we need to hold hands together and do this. And I pitched, and I pitched, and I pitched. And Glen Rock, completely on board. And as Matt said, the mayors of, mayors and council of Midland Park and Wykoff, wonderful people, they have a completely different view of this, and it came down to enforcement. And we have a shot, just a shot, of getting them to adopt our ordinances. But we have, at this time, no shot of getting them to enforce. And we made it as easy for them as we could, that we would provide the enforcement personnel, and whatever fines were levied went to that municipality. Couldn't have been easier. And their view of the world is that they did not want to introduce additional enforcement to their residents. That doesn't mean we're going to stop trying, but we worked really hard on this one because we thought it was a no-brainer. But it is what it is. So, anyone else? Siobhan?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things in no particular. I did want to just say that in the very beginning, prior administrations had sent a letter. Paul is the water rep on this, and he has sent the letter. And I personally think it's a victory that Glen Rock is going to pass an ordinance and enforce that's much further than we've ever been, and it'll create a broader awareness about the usage and the impact on your drinking water. The aquifer does not discriminate. What you water your lawn with is the same as what we drink with. So the more that we can get these terms out there and create an awareness, the more likely we are for the next time for the other remaining water drops to accept it. There was a question about Health Barn. I did just want to say Health Barn is a tenant. We are in a relationship with them. That's a relationship, but it also produces about $50,000 a year in revenue of rent. On top of that, she makes capital improvements. I believe in the past, she's made $65,000 worth of capital, and tonight we received a donation. And she also has a supplemental charity that pumped $4 million in COVID, you know, the Feed the Front Lines Foundation was run through there. So she is what we considered an important relationship, and she does generate revenue, and all of that's through her lease. And lastly, just to add to the No Moe May, there is on social a scorecard of all the lovely byproducts of No Moe May, and I think it's great. It's visual. You can find it. We posted it everywhere. It ranges from, you know, environmental to lifestyle. You know, without the leaf blowers and the lawn mowers, we really improved our quality of life. And again, I'm a big awareness person. What No Moe May did was started a lot of conversations that would be beneficial in the next step. How often do you want to cut your lawn is a big one. I will tell you that we participated in it. We have a landscaper. I don't cut my lawn, don't judge. But my landscaper called me, and we were having a back-and-forth, good discussion, and he said, I have an all-electric crew. Do you want to use that? And I said, yes, I do. That's great. So if anybody wants to look at some of the side benefits that aren't as discussed, I think Frank, the Green Team, Parks and Rec did such a great job on this. And I actually printed it out and put it on our coffee table because my kids' friends were asking me, Mrs. Winogrande, what's up with your lawn? What's up with your lawn? And every time someone asked me, which was frequently, I made them read this. So that's it. Those are the only things I wanted to say, and that's it.
Anyone else? Let's call it a night.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Be resolved by the Village Council of Village of Ridgewood that the Village Council meeting closed session on June 7, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter and agenda can be reached. And this sec closed session will be held in the caucus room of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. Be further resolved as the matter to be discussed in closed session is limited to personnel matters to include Village Manager's office. This matter is allowable under NJSA 10 colon 4-12 at sec. And be further resolved as the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public. Once such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the Village Council. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.